Get in there.
And late numbers and that's somewhere. And then like, it was to um, the theme right, so. And the 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 tree. And that's it.
It is six P M. We will call this regular meeting of the San Benito County Planning Commission to order June sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Could we please read the Zoom protocols?
The County Hill County Plan Mission welcomes your comments. Each individual speaker will be given a moment to attend to a question total of three minutes. If participating on Zoom, select the participant you'd like to join and click the raise hand icon. If you are using a phone, please press nine, star nine, to raise your hand. When your turn arrives, you will hear that you have been answered. At this time, state the first name and last name and tell me where you reside before the.
Thank you. Pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Scaliotti, if you could lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could please get a roll call.
Four commissioners are president, one commissioner, Vice Chair Robert Rodriguez is second.
Thank you. Department announcements?
Uh, yes, Robin Bolster Grant, Assistant Director of Planning and Building Services. Uh, first, I I want to apologize for the size of of the packet tonight and and the lack of dividers. Um, that will that will not be a problem that we run into again. It will be paginated with page numbers and dividers. Uh, it was a little bit of a some last minute changes, so I just I want to say that we're aware of that and and we'll be on top of it. Uh, secondly, uh, more importantly, uh, we have a big announcement to make, uh, coming from the RMA. Our director, Benny Young, has announced that he is resigning from his post. Uh, his last day is June thirtieth, so, um, we we're sad, but also understand, uh, that this, uh, it's all about balance and, uh, life, work. Uh, we have to be paying attention to both and, uh, he's he's done a great job. So that is all from, uh, the RMA.
Thank you. Uh, public comment for any any items under the purview of the Planning Commission that are not on the agenda? Uh, if we could open public comment? Are there any folks on Zoom wishing to speak? Anyone in the gallery?
I apologize, can we pause just a moment? Uh, people via Zoom cannot hear us, and I want to make sure that everyone can hear us for the public.
Sounds good.
Mike.
Do you want, uh, the commissioners to do a mic check as well?
Okay, back to public comment. Are there any folks on Zoom that would like to speak for the general public comment?
I have one speaker. Yeah, a Zoom? Uh, never mind, their hand was lowered.
Okay, thank you. On the consent agenda? Adoption of the minutes, are there any corrections to the minutes?
No corrections, Chair.
Any public comment on the consent agenda?
None via Zoom?
In the gallery? None, okay. What is the wish of the commission for the consent agenda? We make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Four zero, thank you. Uh, regular agenda, item number four, CIP Program Consistency Determination and Recommendations to the Board of Supervisors.
Good evening again, uh, Chair Gibson, Commissioners, uh, Robin Bolster Grant, Assistant Planning Director, uh, Planning and Building Services. I don't know why I keep forgetting that. Um, in accordance with the Government Code six five four zero one, the Planning Commission is required to review the proposed capital improvement program, or CIP, projects, uh, for each, uh, year annually. Uh, in front of you are the, uh, projects for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two fiscal year, and we're asking for determination, uh, that these projects are consistent with the county general plan. Once your commission has determined consistency, the report and the resolution will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors for action on the budget. The CIP projects cover three basic purposes. Uh, first, for the renewal, refurbishment, or replacement of existing facilities; second, for the development of new county facilities and support services; and third, the purchase of vehicles, computer systems, and equipment with a value exceeding one hundred thousand dollars. A consistency determination can be made if a project furthers the objectives and policies of the general plan. Perfect conformity is not required, but the project must be compatible and not in conflict with general plan policies and objectives. Uh, as stated in the staff report, improvements and or replacement of county roads and bridges meet policy four of the transportation element. Park maintenance and improvements are consistent with goal nine of the general plan that calls for a well-balanced system of recreation, and repairs to existing buildings is consistent with the primary intent of the general plan by promoting the health and welfare of the community and providing improved access to and longer lifespan of county facilities. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission passes and adopts the attached resolution finding that the capital improvement program projects are consistent with San Benito County general plan. Capital Improvement Manager Karen Gummens is present to answer questions pertaining to the nature of these projects. Thanks so much, that's all I have.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Mr. Betancourt.
It's, yeah, Richard Betancourt, forty one forty Southside Road. I'm very disappointed. This should have been last on the agenda, not the first, because you have the people, um, sitting here that are doing the people's business that are giving, uh, taxpayers. Uh, to me, that should have been put up last on on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there any public comment via Zoom?
No public comment via Zoom.
Any additional comments in the gallery? Seeing none. Are there any comments from the commissioners?
Um, if Ms. Gummens could speak to us about, uh, the distinction between the, uh, what are going to be the new projects versus what is remedial or reparative of existing infrastructure, um, uh, I would appreciate that, or, I mean, you know, the CIP as I see it, it just has a kind of a list of the various projects, but what's going to be new versus what is just?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the invitation to step up and discuss briefly the projects. I'm Karen Gummens, I'm new about five months as Capital Project Manager, and let me just clarify how I can best help. Your question is you want to, uh, discuss which projects are brand-new build construction versus deferred maintenance or repairs?
Yes.
Um, yes, the, there's typically, uh, about twenty-two projects that was presented as a recommended capital project plan for the board back in May, um, and then again in June, and the focus is a, uh, group of projects that are health and safety related to existing projects. So, um, they range from ADA accessibility, um, public works, uh, improvement to, um, security cameras, um, fire safety improvements was a main priority, um, health and safety with, let's say, jail mold abatement, repairing ag commission, uh, HVA systems that are offline and past their useful life. So, um, there, we have just finished two brand-new constructions of the jail expansion, Center for Rehab, and, um, the ribbon cutting tomorrow is for the new Behavioral Health Center. So on the one-year defis, um, definite five-year recommendation, there is no new, um, building purchase or construction in the presented CIP plan.
Okay. Um, and so the child support, post office move improvements, those have already, those sites have already been secured, or is that, uh, funding that is towards a future move, um, uh, or relocation of those offices?
Oh, thank you for asking. That is a relocation from a leased space. They are backfilling the old, um, it's about ten thousand square foot, uh, vacated place from the, um, Behavioral Health Center on one one three one San Felipe Road.
Okay.
Yeah, and they have secured funding from state grants and department savings to fund, department fund a project for tenant improvements to serve their public customers.
Uh, one other inquiry I have is about the new Adria crossing repair.
I'm sorry, could you kindly repeat that?
Is in regards to the, uh, new Adria road, uh, crossing repair. Um, so, uh, what modifications or what, uh, changes are going to be taking place in that road to, uh, sort of safeguard against, uh, a flood or another washout, or, uh, within that project, uh, you know, uh, what modifications are going to be taking on? Is it just, is it still going to be the same route, uh, the same crossing over the creek and all that?
Um, I don't have that engineering detail, um, or I don't have participation in that aspect of the, um, engineering project. So let me see if, um, perhaps, Michael, or are we, can we circle back with that information?
Okay.
We can't, just to clarify, pardon, just, this is about categories of projects where we don't have all of the information to do a deeper dive into the the specific engineering or, um, plans or anything. It really is just, does the category of project, um, is that consistent with our general plan goals and policies? Thank you.
And to specifically answer your question, that project's going into design, so that has not been determined at this point.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commissioners, or is there a motion on the table?
I do.
Commissioner Scaliotti?
I have a question on the, uh, drain impact fee fund for the storm drain for Fairview Road, Santana Creek Ranch. Shouldn't this, I take it that's going to come out of the, uh, impact funds that they put, that they're placing forward, or shouldn't that come out of their pockets since they're creating the problem? It should come out of their money, not out of the impact fee money? If I'm reading this properly.
The Santana Ranch project is is not addressed, uh, in that project. There are four specific drainage, uh, solutions that we need to put in because culverts have collapsed. Two of them will be funded by the drainage funds, two of them are being funded by road funds. This, the Santana Ranch issue is being handled through another route, and it's not, it's not ready to go into the CIP yet.
Well then, how come it's listed here as we're going to pay for it?
It's not. That is a, that is a culvert that has collapsed that was not replaced when they did the paving work that, that.
Where at? Where's the culvert at?
I can get you those specifics, I don't have them with me.
Please. Thank you, that's all.
Any other Commissioner comments, or is there a motion on the table?
It was just a question on the, uh, San Benito Street and Nash to Union with intersection control, just, uh, kind of more the scope of that.
That also is a design project, so it, the design is not done, we'll be doing it, but we're looking at a whole urban development with street sidewalks, lighting, et cetera, through that whole area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the table? I'll move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty one dash next, a resolution of the San Benito County Planning Commission finding that the proposed twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two capital improvement plan is consistent with the county's general plan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Four zero, thank you. Item number five, PLN one nine zero zero five six Kawahara Agricultural Facility Use Permit.
Hi, good evening, Chair and fellow Commissioners, uh, my name's Ariel Goodspeed. I'm a senior planner with the County of San Benito, and today I will be presenting the Kawahara Agricultural Nursery Facility located at, uh, zero Anzar Road. It's APN zero one two zero three zero zero four five. It's a use permit county file number PLN nineteen zero zero five six. I just want to make sure my presentation goes up on the screen. My apologies. So, um, uh, today I'll be going over, uh, the project location, the site plan, and project description, its land use consi- consistency, uh, SEQA, some modified mitigation measures, and staff's recommendation. I'm sorry, before I go any further, I just will need the next thing to go up on the screen. Let me travel.
Yes. Please stand by. We need the little, the music. Something.
It's gonna be four hours.
Good, can we get ten bucks an hour? Take home.
Can I request a short recess? IT's on their way.
Okay.
And we've been losing audio throughout the beginning of the today's meeting.
Okay, we will take a ten-minute recess until we get our technical issues resolved.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, folks. Sorry, folks.
I'm sorry.
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 Item number five.
So I'm just going to resume where I was at and not start from the beginning if that's okay. So Kawahara Nursery, item five. So today, planning staff actually has a little preview. We have a new GIS software system called ArcGIS Urban. And we're going to use this project to showcase it. So as you can see from your packets, the site plan has been geo referenced onto the project site. So this is the exact layout. We have here is Highway 101. This is Chittenden, the lane goes to San Juan Highway. This is Anzar High School. And then down here is Anzar Road. Okay. I'll take it a little slower. So so the project has proposed to have an eighteen thousand square foot overhang and a thirty-six thousand square foot shipping and handling building, which is located right here. My mouse is not moving. It is on my screen, but it's not showing up. So the gray building off to the right. And then there's five hundred and eighteen thousand square foot greenhouses. Those are indicated in green. In the center is an eighteen thousand square foot production greenhouse. You'll see that the road goes all the way through to Anzar. And this is going to be aggregate base surrounding the greenhouses for circulation will be aggregate base. But along the entrance will be concrete. I'm going to move it down. And bring it around to the front here. So this is now looking south. Here's Highway 101. Here is the interchange. There is going to be a new turn lane coming off of Chittenden. All access to the project site. And truck movements will be coming up here and going in to the shipping and receiving building. It's going to be a twenty-four foot wide drive. It's going to generate approximately sixty-two trips in a day. There's going to be ten to fifteen employees. Surrounding the the greenhouses will be nine growing fields. There's currently a well that's being used for the site. There is also the San Benito County Water District Blue Line that comes up to the property that can be used as a backup source of water. No. Nope. We're just gonna have one of those nights, guys. Water. So currently it's using a little over six hundred thousand gallons of water for the row crops existing. And this proposed project actually will be using a little bit less. It's estimated about a little over five hundred thousand gallons of water. There's going to be one employee bathroom in the shipping receiving building. And a septic system will be designed to environmental health standards. And then along San Juan Creek, there will be a stormwater channel to infiltrate any runoff, so it doesn't go straight into the creek. And so, yes, so our trial run of our new soft 3D software system. So all of the building heights and greenhouses are maxing out at fifteen feet high. So as you can see at a ground level, it is relatively low to the surrounding land uses. And now back to the presentation. So this per the general plan, it's agricultural support uses is allowed use. It's consistent with zoning, agricultural productive zoning and a conditional use for commercial greenhouses and accessory uses in buildings such as barns, fronts, outbuildings and shipping receiving containers for the project. These are pictures of the current site conditions. It's row crop. The commercial greenhouse that's going in is for wholesale. It has no retail component. You know, max of fifteen employees during the week. They'll be there between 7:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. with some possible truck trips up to 10:00 p.m. and one to two employees on the weekends for watering and such purposes. And so the initial study MMD was prepared for this project. It was circulated from April 26th to May 25th of this year. We received back two comment letters, one from California Department of Fish and Wildlife and one from the traffic engineer Keith Higgins. And so I just want to discuss some modifications to two mitigation measures in response to these comments. Now, it is consistent with SEQA to allow for mitigation that's proposing no new impact. So the biology one, it was for mitigation measure Bio dash five, stream and wetland mapping and stream and wetland habitat mitigation. So the language that was added was just additional clarifying language from CDFW. The condition was existing. It just added some more details to it. The the letter that we received from the traffic engineer put in there that essentially there are sixty-two trips and the morning peak hour trips, there was no additional delay. And that the PM trips was a zero point one added delay in the in the PM peak hour. Now mitigation measures are there to mitigate an impact. And this letter that was provided and with county staff review, we determined that there was no significant impact. And if there's no significant impact, then mitigation measure is not needed. So that is why this was striked from the mitigation monitoring reporting program and included in your current resolution tonight. So to conclude, staff is recommending, based on the foregoing findings and considerations based on the evidence and the record, that you adopt the initial study, mitigate negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program with the substituted mitigation measures as discussed and included in the resolution. And to adopt the attached resolution for approval, PLN 190056, subject to the findings and conditions included within the resolution. I also have the project engineer who is representing the applicant, Alan O'Drad, who can answer any technical questions you may have and can speak in addition to the project. If there's any questions for staff, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Is there any public comment first?
There is no public comment.
Anyone in the gallery? Seeing none. Commissioners, comments, questions?
Just to cover the drainage plant, so it's my understanding that most of the drainage will be contained in the site. There won't be any overflow, that much overflow except to the event of a hundred year flooding event or something like that. Is that the correct conclusion from the drainage?
Yes, all drainage will be contained on site. Stormwater channel will be put in along San Juan Creek to make sure that no runoff is going directly into there, that it's all been infiltrated prior. Is there anything else I can answer?
Any other commissioners or Commissioner Pack, do you have more questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez?
I'm just kind of want to make it known for public.
Are we still able to go into a development agreement? Are we past that stage?
That'd be a question for council.
Yeah.
Development agreements are typically prepared for longer term projects like tentative subdivision maps where the build out extends over a period of time. And the purpose of the development agreement is in part to lock the entitlements in place as of the regulations in effect at the time the project is approved. And in exchange for that extension of the entitlement period, there are negotiated project benefits and other terms and conditions. For a conditional use permit of this nature, there's a requirement that it be constructed within a specific period of time. And if it's not, then they'd have to reapply for conditions. So it's conceivable that a development agreement could accompany a conditional use permit, but it's not offered, nor has it been requested in conjunction with this project.
Okay, yeah. So what I'm trying to get at is the revenue that this project will bring to San Benito County. And one of my proposals was the use of direct pay permits, kind of where does the company, where will they be buying most of their equipment? Will they be purchasing outside of the county or, you know, or outside of the state?
I'm going to invite up the applicant engineer, Alan.
Alan Andrade of MH Engineering. Thank you, commissioners, for taking the time to evaluate this and ask a question along those lines. When we first proposed the project to RMA Director Harry Maverignaz, is he had a similar type of a question? And it was along the lines of how can I substantiate what the benefit to the county will be from a financial concern with regard to approval of the CUP? It's, it is not the intent of the applicant nor county staff to this point to even consider something that would be different than any other business that's operating in the county. Now, if you're asking for the applicant to commit to buying other materials in a specific location just to provide additional county benefit, that would have to be within the county ordinance to kind of allow you to ask for that. And so I defer to county council with regard to the ability to do so. But this is a local company. It is in Santa Clara right now. They have two locations, one in Morgan Hill, one in Gilroy. And their expansion plans for San Benito County, including San Benito County in this business and the ability to, you know, employ San Benito County residents, some of which already work at the other plants, is the primary goal, is they need to grow. Their other facilities are full and they purchased this property 20 years ago. You know, with this in mind that when the other sites became full or if development around the other sites prohibited them to expand, this would be the location they would go to. So, you know, from regard to what sort of dollars and cents this is going to provide the county, it's going to be in line with every other business that's doing this type of work in the whole region and within the state.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion on the table?
I move to adapt the plan with the native declarations as proposed.
Is there a second?
Aye, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Motion is adopted. Was that motion clear enough, council?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Item number six, Mendez temporary use permit.
Hi again, this is Ariel Goodspeed with the County Planning Department. And tonight I will be presenting the Mendez temporary use permit out at San D nine eighty Levers Lane. It is county file number PLN twenty-one zero zero two-three. Hang on just a moment, I just want to make sure the PowerPoint can go up. Can we please take a short recess? I guess the video on Zoom is not working again. Um, maybe five minute recess, I apologize.
Five?
Yes?
Was that?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess for additional technical issues. I apologize, folks.
I promise we will get through this.
Testing, testing, one, two, three. I can hear background, yes. I hear testing. Okay, we got, we got confirmation they can hear. Okay. Okay. Okay, let's, well. I don't know. I think. Oh, so that's what I was trying to say. Yours was three, mine was four, next one's going to be five for that. We're going to wait because we have said like twenty minutes and so we have to wait for people to connect and. You know, like, this is just part of, part of our technical world here. And I think things don't work out. I mean, I think we have to. Yeah. No. Yeah, no worries, it's okay. Um, yeah. Okay, thanks so much. Go to, go to, go to six for one. Um, one, go in order.
Well, we're missing one person.
We're still miss, okay, then we'll go to seven.
Item number seven.
Hi, Ariel Goodspeed. Um, our consultant with Benchmark Resources, Bob Dell, will be presenting tonight. And he will be via Zoom and should be going live now.
Good evening, commissioners, I'm Bob Dell with Benchmark Resources. Can you hear me, Ariel?
Bob, if you would like to share your screen.
Yes, and are you able to hear me?
It pops up on the computer, your computer.
Yeah, it is, it's popping up here, it's just not popping up.
Sure.
Good evening, Ariel, I'm looking for confirmation.
Either that, or at this point, go back to six, because the gentleman is in the gallery.
Ariel, I am sharing my screen.
It's, it's on. There we go, we can see it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, if you want to go ahead and start.
And you can't hear me? I'm not, it's, I'm, it's unclear if you can hear me or not.
Bob, we can't hear you?
I am not muted.
Can we just go back to item number six? And just follow the, the order now that this gentleman's back? Since it's our technical difficulties that have thrown the entire meeting into disarray? Okay, we'd like to go back to item number six, please.
My apologies.
PLN two one zero zero two three Mendez temporary use permit. And for the folks at home, I apologize, we've suffered numerous technical issues. And we've had several breaks, and now we're back, and we're going to continue in order with item number six.
Hi, Ariel Goodspeed, County Planner with, uh, today here to present the Mendez temporary use permit located at seventy-nine eighty Lover's Lane. Uh, county file number PLN twenty-one zero zero two three. Here we go. Okay, so we'll be going over the project's location, site plan, project description, its land use consistency, sequoia, and staff's recommendation tonight. So, the project, um, is located, uh, south of, um, Highway one fifty-two, or also known as Pacheco Pass, and north shore road, uh, right along Lover's Lane, that's, uh, the red circle parcel. These are some site photos of the existing, um, site conditions. Uh, this is about, uh, four, four hundred feet or so, uh, into the, uh, drive, uh, and, um, the picture to the top right is looking, uh, east. Picture at the bottom is looking north, and picture at the, uh, bottom left is looking north, and picture at the bottom, uh, right is looking west. So, the temporary use permit would allow live music events that would include, um, food and alcoholic and non-alcoholic, uh, beverage. The food would, uh, be provided in, in food trucks that would be permitted, uh, through environmental health. Um, so the new attractions is basically some live music, some dancing, food beverages, um, and then the temporary structures include a stage for either the live or DJ band, um, uh, forty-two, uh, folding tables, uh, porta-potties and wash stations, um, a temporary electricity is provided by a generator, um, and then the food trucks. So this is the site plan. Uh, to the right is Lover's Lane. Uh, circulation would be coming, uh, through, um, and then entering, uh, at the red dot. Parking is to the left and the right, um, on, uh, highlighted in the blue squares. Um, and security, uh, and parking attendants would be posted at the entrance, um, and, uh, to the site and entrance to, uh, the, uh, parking. So this is a little bit closer view, so this is looking north. Um, and you'll have the stage, uh, north of the road, um, and the tables lined on either end, generators in the back, uh, food truck or trucks, uh, posted up at the beginning of the, uh, in front of the tables, and, um, restrooms, uh, near, near the entrance exit with the wash stations. So, um, uh, it is, uh, consistent with, uh, general plans, uh, to allow, allow visitor-serving uses in agricultural areas. Um, it is consistent for accessory uses under the AP zoning, and it is also consistent for allowing temporary use events, um, as approved by the planning director, um, to scale. So, uh, generally, um, these types of temporary use permits are, um, approved by the planning director. But this project, we received, um, s- uh, several, uh, neighbor concerns. And so we, planning found that it would be appropriate to bring, bring to the planning commission. Um, and, uh, in, in, from the time we received those, uh, neighbors' concerns and coming here, um, planning has worked with the applicant to address, uh, the main, the three main concerns had to do with noise in that area, traffic and parking along Lover's Lane, and, um, possible drinking and driving. So what the applicant and county staff has worked to do to mitigate these things, it, um, for the noise, um, there will, all, uh, music will end by eight PM. Now, um, it is actually a, a pretty restrictive noise ordinance for this district. It's only forty-five decibels measured from the property line, um, during the day and thirty-five at night. Um, and all the events are going to be during, uh, they're going to be day events. There is only going to be, uh, a maximum of twelve events or twelve days. Now, temporary use permits allows up to thirty. So this is more, uh, a more restrictive than what would, um, that, what could be allowed. Um, and then as far as the noise, uh, ending, uh, all live music by eight isn't, is additionally more, uh, restrictive. And this was, you know, taken into consideration, uh, to make sure that all, um, uh, you know, neighbors, um, could enjoy, uh, the area. Um, as far as trapping, uh, traffic and parking along Lover's Lane, there are conditions put in to the temporary use permit that they have, uh, to coordinate with the sheriff's department. They, um, have to, uh, they're going to have, uh, security, uh, they're going to have parking attendants. There's also, uh, they're going to notify all of the participants that, uh, if they do not park on-site, then they would, um, uh, they, their cars, vehicles would be towed. So deterring anyone from parking along Lover's Lane is disturbing any of the neighbors, um, in that manner. Um, and then as far as the drinking and driving, um, measures done to help mitigate this, um, is that with the ticket sales, there's a, to, to drink, uh, at time with the sale. And also, um, uh, as part of, uh, controlling, uh, alcohol and, uh, driving, there was going to be a cutoff of one hour prior to the event ending. There was also, um, going to allow, um, as much time as needed for anyone that needed to call, uh, ride share or taxi or anything else to, uh, leave the premise, um, safely. So, in this manner, uh, the applicant and, um, county staff feel that the neighbors' concerns, um, have been addressed, and, um, with the conditions provided, um, would be able to, uh, have, um, uh, an event, uh, that is appropriate to the surrounding land uses. Uh, it was determined to be categorically exempt, uh, for, uh, existing facilities, uh, section fifteen-three-oh-one and minor alterations to land, section fifteen-three-oh-four. So, staff, um, recommends that based on the foregoing findings and considerations and evidence of the record, that they adopt a tax resolution for approval. Uh, county file PLN twenty-one zero zero two-three, subject to the findings and conditions of the approval included within the resolution. Um, so the applicant, Jorge Mendez, is here, uh, and would like to speak. If you would like to have him first, um, I can also take any questions at this time.
If we could hear from the applicant, please.
Yes, if you'd like to come up.
Everyone? My name is Jorge Mendez, um, applying in Lover's Lane. Uh, we were with our family here, uh, six years ago now. I've been doing this, uh, entertainment business for about fifteen years. I've also taken also every single step to make sure that the community is safe, our families are safe. Because these are, these are events where actually I can take. And that's what we want to do, want to be able to make sure that the families in the area can actually come out with their kids and enjoy themselves. It's not a nightclub atmosphere, it is more of a day, day event and a family-driven event. We have, uh, been working with planning, uh, we have done this, like I said, for about fifteen years. We take all the por- safety protocols, security, parking attendants, health department, and we take all that into consideration. And, uh, at least we don't want to cause, we want, we don't want to cause anything with our neighbors. Therefore, we have enough property where we can house and park as many cars that no one can come in. That's basically, I want, I wanted you guys to hear that.
Thank you. Okay, we have a question for you, sir.
I have, uh, three questions for you, uh, regarding this application. Uh, the first is in regards to the sound. Have you, uh, consulted or worked out a, uh, sound management plan with an acoustic engineer?
We do have sound engineers, uh, at every single event. Like I said, I've, I've been doing this for a real long time. Uh, ten years ago, uh, I ran, uh, Morgan Hill, Rancho Grande, which, uh, you know, entitles, is very similar to what we're trying to hear. Uh, and it is, it, it was also, uh, noise, uh, contained. So we do have sound engineers, we have, it's actually a real professional atmosphere and, uh, employees that come in. We have acoustic people that come in, make sure the sound's there, and thus, you know, we'll take care of that.
Okay, uh, have you considered, um, possibly, um, adding acoustic barriers or acoustic walls around the edges of the site, uh, to mitigate, uh, sound impacts?
There's this, uh, we, we've talked about it, you're going to, this is a temporary thing, we want to see how, how it, uh, you know, works out, if, if we're okay with the neighborhood. You know, at some point, uh, our, our theme is mainly an outdoor event, so it doesn't feel like you're in the hall and that you're more freely to have more fun. And that's what we're trying to create. Um, we have thought about something, uh, building something so it would be indoor, but that would kind of take a little way of enjoying the atmosphere and having an outdoor event.
Okay, uh, the next question I have for you is, uh, as I understand it, you're anticipating crowds of two hundred to four hundred. Now, is that anticipating, uh, traffic of two hundred to four hundred people into the parking lots? Uh, especially because as I see it, there's sort of one entrance and one exit for lovers, uh, to the.
Uh, we work with, um, with the fire department, and we also work with the, uh, court enforcement. It went out, the actual lane is, is big enough for a two-road, in and out. Um, our entrance to the actual event area is a little bit over five hundred feet. So what we do, we have a parking attendant in the front and a security car in the front, so they prevent people from parking and also guiding them towards, uh, the entrance to the parking, which we will not be holding traffic back, because like I said, it'll be about five hundred feet before they even stop, and they'll be basically directed where they'll be parked at.
So you're anticipating maybe a maximum of four hundred vehicles for an event?
No, this is, uh, well, you do about four to six people per car, so if it's four hundred people, no more than a hundred cars, a hundred and fifty cars, if that.
Okay, okay. Um, and the next question is in regards to the, uh, drinks. Uh, you'll be serving, uh, cocktails as well as wine and beer, as far as alcoholic beverages?
It's, it's not in, in our plans right now. Uh, it's more like, it's a day event. Um, so we try to stay away, uh, from as much as, as alcohol, uh, or harder alcohol at, at this point. Um, and if that, people will be getting caught, it, they'll be tagged, they'll be wrist-banned, and that's how. and that's how we're able to tell who can buy and who cannot buy a beer.
So you, it would only be beer and wine?
At this point, mainly beer, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Pack, any other questions?
No, those were my questions.
Not right now? Any other questions?
I just have one question. I don't know if it'd be for yourself or for staff. So when you said parking attendants or traffic mitigation, uh, my only concern was that left, uh, if they were, um, going to the event, that left turn on Lover's Lane, would they have somebody doing, I don't know what the?
There will be traffic control at the entrance of Lover's Lane, uh, coordinating people in. Um, uh, uh, fire has also gone out and made sure that there's, uh, appropriate signage, um, at the front, uh, of, of the wall. Uh, on one of my first images, if they show up the screen, I can show it again. Um, and so there will be people directing, making sure that everyone is, uh, coming in, uh, safely, um, throughout the event.
Okay. I have a question for you, Mr. Mendez. Have you had events at this location before?
We have.
Okay. Have you measured the decibel levels?
No, we have not.
Okay. That would be my concern.
So, uh, uh, county, um, county staff, uh, does have the ability to, um, record decibel measures. And, um, as part of the conditions included in the resolution, prior to any event, they have to notify, um, uh, s- staff as well as the other agencies that they are hosting event two weeks prior. So, uh, two weeks prior, we can make sure to coordinate, um, and if we need to have someone out to measure decibel levels.
Okay. So then there, if there's a continued issue, that permit would be revoked, is it?
Yes, and that's included under the conditions.
Okay. Commissioner Scagliotti?
I have one question. Has the sheriff been called out there to your private, your prior, uh?
Events?
Yeah, yeah, they, they were, they've been there a couple of times. Um, they, uh, they said, uh, you know, they checked out the noise. It wasn't as high, but people do call, and, uh, they were, they were fine with it.
They haven't had to arrest anybody for fighting or anything, nothing like that?
Not at all, not at all. Uh, usually, uh, they, they would come in, and they'll drive by, uh, trying to figure out what's going on. They show you, see what's going on, they walk away. Two times, if you recall, they were actually just called for the, for the noise complaint. And when they got there, there, I mean, it wasn't, no issue at all. Uh, the noise was low enough where the sheriff didn't cite us, arrest anybody, or tell us to shut it down at all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I would also like to make a note that, um, code enforcement did investigate, uh, an additional noise complaint on Lover's Lane, and in discovery, found that it wasn't this property, but additional properties. So there are, uh, additional properties in the area that have, uh, also hosted, uh, some sort of events that have caused a noise disturbance. So code enforcement is currently actively investigating this to end dealing with the, that issue.
Okay. So I have a question for you, Ariel. Uh, other than the yucca or whatever those plants are along the road, are there any other green sound barriers that would block the noise for, for the neighbor's benefit?
Yeah, so those are, um, old palm trees that are lining, um, the drive. There are not, uh, additional, um, measures, except that that, uh, part of the design of where the stage, uh, is set up is, it's a ten-point-eight acre parcel, and it's located in the back center to be the furthest away from all of the property neighbors.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments or questions? Seeing none, are there any public comments? We'll start with Zoom.
I see none via Zoom.
Okay. Comments from the gallery? Do we have comment, if you could call?
Yes.
Hi, thanks for hearing us out. Uh, I'm a, uh, resident of Lover's Lane at the seventy-eight-hundred block. So in past unsanctioned events at the same property, uh, we've had noise issues. It's a floodplain, so the, the sound carries, uh, carries to the south and to the east extremely well. There's nothing to block it. Uh, so I don't know what he's done to attenuate the sound. I, I, that's a good point that he knows, I think he does need to do testing and barriers, because an open forum like that, uh, just, it allows the sound to carry all over, especially to the east and to the south of us, or to the prop- of the subject property. And, and past events, we've had people leaving the parties, uh, inebriated and fast, uh, driving fast. And as you know, Lover's Lane is a very narrow road. I don't think it meets current code for, for a, uh, county road. So it has a lot of po- potholes and, and the edges are very uneven. So what happened in the past was people didn't want to pay the, the entrance fee, and they would park on the road and block people's, people's driveways and create a more narrow hazard, because it, it's a very narrow road to begin with. So, uh, I think two-hundred to four-hundred cars, that road can't handle that. So, uh, if they were all directed back in and out to one-fifty-two, might be feasible if we did some road improvements. But, um, the other option, the other thing I've noticed on the property is there's no way, you're parking a bunch of vehicles on, on dry land with weeds, uh, unless they've disced it. So you got these cataly- you know, two-hundred car, two-to-four-hundred cars with catalytic converters that are hot. And in the summer, there's no, no, there's no source of water out there. There's no tank. We have no fire hydrants. So even us as residents are required to have a water tank in front of our house, a five-thousand gallon minimum. So that's been, not been addressed. So, um, there's, those are my issues. Um, the noise just, yeah, it's, we're in a floodplain, so it just really, really, uh, moves around out there. Right, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Michelle Schroder. Good evening. I am a resident of the county. My name is Michelle Schroder. I live at seventy-eight-sixty Lover's Lane, less than half a mile away from the subject property. I am speaking against the granting of this permit. As noted, the events proposed by this, uh, application have actually been occurring for quite some time, apparently without a permit. The events are noisy with loud music and, I might add, obnoxiously loud D Js. I can hear the noise from inside my house with the doors and windows shut. Every time this happens, my husband and I put up with it for hours, until we finally call the sheriff, usually after ten P M. While I appreciate Ms. Goodspeed's attempt to mitigate the impacts of this event center on the neighborhood, I have very little confidence that the proposed limitations will be enforced. Will the county be on-site the day of the event to measure the decibels? Will the county be on-site to make sure that the music stops at eight P M? Will the county be there to make sure that the participants have only two drinks? What if there are more than twelve events per year? Will the county be on-site to shut down the thirteenth event? I fear that the burden of enforcement will fall on the residents of Lover's Lane, and we will do the only thing that we can do, call the sheriff. Is this a really, really a good use of limited law enforcement resources? The staff report makes reference to this being consistent with the general plan, specifically policy three-point-seven visitor-serving uses, visitor-serving uses in agricultural areas. That policy mentions as examples wine tasting rooms and bed and breakfast inns, uses that encourage tourism, especially tourism related to agriculture. The events contemplated in this application seem very different. They are not designed to encourage people to stay in our county and buy our wine, for instance. People who live on Lover's Lane can expect to put up with certain inconveniences, farm equipment noise, animal noises and smells, all the hassle that comes with living in a flood zone. But one thing I did not expect, when I moved to Lover's Lane, was having to put up with an event center where people pay to have parties with hundreds of people and blur loud music in our countryside neighborhood on an otherwise peaceful Sunday evening. This use is not consistent with the agricultural character of Lover's Lane, and I urge you to deny it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mark Schroder.
Hi, uh, my name is Mark Schroder. That's bad. Um, yes, I'm a resident of Lover's Lane at seventy-eight-sixty. Uh, Michelle's my wife, and it's gonna be a tough act to, oh, actually, I'll do my best. Um, I wanted to mention, uh, that, uh, I am against also, uh, granting of this. And, uh, I have indeed called the sheriff. I, after talking to my neighbors, including Carlos Soscona and some others who were bothered by it, I, and, um, on one occasion in December of last year, and this is one of six occasions, so it is not two occasions, it was more like six. Uh, and on one of those occasions, um, I, uh, received, uh, back the following message, and if I could go ahead and, uh, play that for you.
Yes, this is Sergeant Lottel with the San Francisco County Sheriff's Office. I'm calling for Mr. Schroder. I understand, uh, the disturbance on going loud music in concert that appears to be going on, uh, on Lover's Lane. Uh, and out there, I've talked to the responsible. They are shutting it down. Um, it is definitely a considerable operation. I get your issues with it with the light show and noise. So they should be done in the next few minutes. I'm gonna remain in the area. Until then, if you have any questions or concerns, feel free to give me a call.
And, uh, that was at, uh, that was after eight o'clock. That was actually closer to nine o'clock. And as I said, that was only on one occasion. And what the, uh, deputy was referring to is a laser light show as well as amplified music, and he referred to it as being several thousand watts. And when my wife referred to feeling the music or hearing it inside the house, the bass is such that, uh, and don't get me wrong, we can hear the, the voices as well, the mid-range. You can hear everything. Uh, but the bass is, uh, so intense that it's actually turning the house into a resonator such that you feel like you're inside of a drum. So the forty-five decibel limit is absolutely, given that we're over a quarter-mile distant, it, it has not been adhered to, and there's no confidence whatsoever that it will be, because this has been, uh, on six occasions. And, uh, we have had to put up with traffic, as my neighbor Carlos has mentioned. We've had to put up with, uh, uh, several other things, including the, uh, the lasers. Uh, and we have, uh, also dealt with dust issues.
Okay, thank you.
I'm cut off.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
No more speaker cards.
Any questions or comments, thoughts, from the commissioners?
Uh, Ms. Goodspeed, um, what, uh, input or comment has been made with regards to the, by the sheriff's department or the fire department with regards to this plan? Have they been consulted in this?
Yes, the sheriff, uh, had no comments, uh, when the application was referred over to them. Um, and, uh, the fire department actually had done, uh, an entire inspection and had included that, you know, a sign needed to be at the front, uh, fire extinguishers, uh, life, health, safety inspection needed to be done at the day of the event. Uh, all of those items are included as conditions, uh, into, um, in, into the resolution. Um, so both were, uh, both were conferred, uh, on this, uh, proposed project, and, um, all of their, uh, requirements, uh, or recommendations were included, uh, into the resolution.
Uh, I have a question for, a further question for Mr. Mendez, which is, um, uh, Mr. Mendez, if you could comment for us about, uh, what me- uh, what measures you'll be taking, uh, to comply with the dark skies rule and the lighting rule uh, in light of, uh, the public testimony with regards to laser light shows?
We can definitely, uh, definitely work on, uh, on the lighting and the lasers. Uh, like I said, it's all preventative engineers, so that you can actually put it a certain direction where it will just either face down in that area, it will not shoot up. Uh, what I find hard to believe is, is a huge line of trees, maybe fifty feet tall, across from us, so I don't see how those lasers would affect any of the neighborhood at the time. Also, the complaint from the sheriff, the phone call, um, I wasn't understanding that you can have loud noise at the time. I, I, you know, this is before we started working with, with the county, before ten P M. Uh, most of my shows ended way before ten P M. You notice the call was around nine-ish. For the same reason, like I said, I have my kids there. I wanna go home, I wanna go sleep. Uh, the reason why we're doing eight o'clock is also so we can be able to clean up, you know, during, before it gets any darker, and people actually get to leave on time. And I don't want to finish a show at midnight and have to wait till two-one, two in the morning for somebody to get an Uber. Also reason why we're finishing early. Uh, parking attendants have been, uh, taken care of, uh, given, um, directions on how to drive traffic inside. Uh, if you see Lover's Lane, might not be big enough as, as a city street, but you fit eighteen-wheelers that are going in there and a bus at the same time on the same road. So the road is, maybe it's not as huge, but it is a good size. That's one. Uh, parking is, as far as long-going on Lover's Lane, it really doesn't happen. I mean, our property is over a thousand feet long on Lover's Lane. So if anybody parks on the street, which like I said, it will not be happening in this event, it will still be all driveway, and it, not, not in any point affected the actual road. So I, I, I understand the concerns of the neighborhood. That's why we're also working with, you know, the county and with, uh, planning, so we can take care of all that. And again, we're trying to do the proper thing here. You know, I understand there was events before, you know, I took a fall for it. I paid some fines on it as well, and we're trying to do the right thing. We also, the concern for the drinks, we also, uh, spoke, uh, with planning on even hiring a couple deputies, which I used to do before at the events with, than in Morgan Hill. Couple deputies in the front, obviously, you know, we all know, you see a deputy, you tend to slow down by yourself. I don't have to tell you, you'll stop drinking. You'll see the deputy, you will stop on your own. And we're also working on that. We proposed that, if they've, if needed, and if it makes our neighbors feel a lot safer, we have no issue hiring a couple deputies during our events. And again, it will not be two-hundred, four-hundred cars. I mean, we're looking at two-hundred, four-hundred people. In this day and age, who really goes by themselves to an event? Uh, we're not gonna have four-hundred cars. And, um, like I said, we're doing the proper thing. We're trying to do it properly. We're trying to finish events early, and obviously, I mean, there's only way, one way to find out. I mean, this is a permit that can get revoked. And that's.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Pack, any other questions? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, it was just the question for, for staff. What would the ramifications be if, say, this, um, an applicant is denied, and they continue to do these, uh, events? What would the, is there a?
That would be a code compliance case. They would potentially face, uh, being red-tagged, sanctioned. Could be fines. Uh, there are a number of different avenues that the county has when folks are, uh, in violation.
And if they were denied by the finding commission, one of their administrative deputies is to approach the board supervisor on appeal and request that they reconsider their options.
Commissioner Scagliotti?
Uh, no questions at this time.
I could just add one thing. I mean, we're trying to get our permits. We're trying to do it properly. Again, it's a permit that can get revoked. If we're not following, you know, what, what we are set up to do, I have no issue stopping. This is, to me, this is a business that I can do from home, that I want to do from home. I do have, uh, other avenues of revenue, but this is something that I enjoy doing. And I enjoy doing, enjoy doing it because my family's part of it. So, I mean, all I ask is, give us a chance, let's do it right, and, you know, if we cannot come, if we cannot comply with what you asked, I have no issue stopping.
Thank you.
I have a question for county council. Uh, Mr. Ellenwood, uh, at this time, would it be appropriate for members of the planning commissioner to suggest amendments to the conditional use plan?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, um, there are four possible amendments I would like to suggest that we consider, uh, before approving this plan. Uh, the first is a stipulation that no hard liquor will be served at events. Uh, just because a two-drink limit, cocktails, a Long Island iced tea may contain far more alcohol than a beer or a wine. That's the first condition I propose. A second condition that I propose that, uh, we amend to this conditional use plan is, uh, for water tankage or, you know, some sort of. or, you know, some sort of water on site to assist with fire. A third condition that I would like to suggest is a condition about hiring deputies for security purposes at events. Fourth condition is, you know, I asked about the possibility of temporary sound barriers. Commissioner Gibson asked about the possibility of trees or green barriers. So having the conditional permit contingent on a sound engineering mitigation plan that does discuss possible infrastructure, barriers and/or greenage that will act to reduce the sound coming from out of the site and also addressing the mitigation against laser and excessive lights. So I think those are, yeah, so five additional amendments that we would like to have or that I would like to suggest before we consider and finalize approval of this conditional use. Do the other commissioners have comments?
Commissioner Rodriguez?
I think there was a, a fire concern on the, the dirt or the grass. And that's been addressed, you said, Ariel, already by?
Yeah, they were, fire would, had them do weed abatement. That was also going to be a requirement for, for the property. But we are, we can do additional water storage that is being proposed.
And that's the 5,000 gallon, was it 5,000 gallon requirement or something like that?
These were temporary events. Usually the water storage requirement is for permanent structures. But we can work with fire to get an appropriate water storage amount. Generally, those, those gallon tanks are the 5,000 gallon storage tanks.
Actually, I suppose that does lead to an additional question for Mr. Mendez. Mr. Mendez, are these events on, you know, sort of more rainy winter events? Are there going to be tents or kind of overhead coverings at the site for some of the events?
Would normally be during the summer. That's the idea for only, you know, eight to 12 events max. And it'll be a summer thing. We're also working with, with fire for approval on tents. So if, we could probably get a tent big enough to enclose some of the sound, it could probably work out. I have no issue with any of the concerns you guys have and the recommendations you're making, there's not an issue at all.
I also have the fire chief on Zoom, and he can speak if that's okay with the commission?
Yes. Chief Padola?
Yes. Chief Padola, you should be allowed to talk?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Hello?
Um, if you're via phone, press star six to unmute yourself. If you're via Zoom, you press the mute button.
Hi, can you hear me? 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 Really? Really? Hello? Hello?
Hold it, give us a hold it, man.
Interesting.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Yes, yes. Speaker to the computer.
Can you hear me?
Um. Okay, Charlie, we put the microphone up to the computer speaker. Go ahead and try.
Can you hear me now?
Barely.
Hang on. Hang on.
Uh. Wow, I don't think it's over the jump. It should just be coming through the hollers. Yeah. Yeah. He's got it here. Yeah. Hey, I'm going to put you up to the speaker here and see if this works, okay? You? Yeah. Going back, I'm going back and forth. Allowed to talk? Wait, it says.
How about now, can you guys hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
Hang on, almost there.
Is that what you meant, almost there?
How about now, can you guys hear me?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Awesome. All right. Darn, darn Zoom, the, the Goonies are out there today. So we, we could talk about the, the fire requirements there. I did go out there, I did talk to them. We did talk about life safety aspects, we did talk about the weed abatement. I think if he positioned it to point towards the west, away from everything, that would help to mitigate it if he locate, relocated his speakers. But as far as the long-term and for future, we were talking about water storage out there also. He would have to weed abate it all the way down. Weed abate where the parking's at, the roadway into it, and then some water storage. And we would do at least a 5,000 gallon tank with some refill rate to be able to, to suppress the fire that was out there. And he had agreed on all that stuff. That was something for the future, but if we want to make him, have him do as a conditions of approval, that would be fine too.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Okay, thank you.
You got it, sorry about all this.
Ariel?
I have a question for you, Ariel. There was other applicants that have brought forward events.
We've had them do plantings.
To block the neighborhood neighbors, but I don't see any.
Condition for that. I know it is 10 Hugh Jakers, I'm on 15, and when my neighbor, I won't say who, turns up her music, you can hear everything. And she's not that close. So I can understand the neighbor's concerns about being by an entertainment venue when they moved out to the country. So why don't we have mitigation measures?
Well, we, we can definitely go back and include a condition for some sound barriers, whether it be vegetation or temporary structures. That is not a problem.
So I think that addressed all of your concerns. Are there any other concerns or comments from the commissioners while we're adding to the conditions?
Yeah, it was just a clarification to Devin. He said something about deputies. I don't know, like, I just heard someone say security or deputies and.
Well, a part of the, you know, amendments to the conditional use permit would be an expectation and a stipulation that, you know, a, an off-duty deputy would be hired to act as onsite security and to basically ensure and mitigate against the risk of drunk, drunk driving at the events.
So you're saying, like, an off-duty, like, one of our off-duties or he, like, like, who's providing that? The county or the, or the individual?
That the event coordinator, much like other event coordinators in other counties, would be under the expectation to hire, you know, at least one law enforcement agent to act as a part of their, as a component of their onsite security for events.
Got it, that's fine.
Is there a motion on the table?
I have a motion to deny.
Is there a second?
My motion would be, a different motion, which would be a motion to table.
Okay, so there, there is no second? So the motion dies? Is there another motion?
I would, my motion would be to table this item for further review and for amendment, you know, for discussion once the amendments to the conditional use permit have been added.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second this motion.
All those in favor say aye to continue. Is there a date certain? Or next meeting, two months?
Well, I suppose that is a question for the RMA. How rapidly do you think we would be able to get amendments to the conditional use permit that addresses that?
Amendment process would be fairly straightforward. I do want to make sure that we have the, the wording that, that you're suggesting. So if I can just clarify what, what we would, what, what staff would be adding.
The five amendments that have been proposed is, one, the addition of a 5,000 gallon water tank at the site per the fire chief's suggestions. The second item would be a stipulation that no hard liquor would be served at events at the site. You know, to mitigate against drunk driving. The third stipulation is that a condition of events would be that a law enforcement officer would be hired to be a part of the security component at events.
And you said one or more, sorry, just to clarify?
One or more law enforcement officers will be expected to be a part of the security component at, you know, events. That an acoustic engineer be consulted and that a acoustic mitigation plan that may possibly include temporary and/or permanent sound barriers and/or vegetation and trees to mitigate the sound impact to the site be presented with the conditional use permit. That's the fourth condition. And the fifth condition is a plan for the mitigation of a light, lighting impacts from events be included with the condition. So, so those are the five amendments that we would, that I would like to propose for the conditional use permit.
Okay, just to clarify again, mitigation on the light or prohibition? I thought I heard you say prohibition initially.
Mitigation to ensure that it complies with the dark skies rule as listed under condition eight. So we need to see a presentation for how light and lasers will be mitigated, that there will not be light intrusion on neighboring properties.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So the next, the next hearing would be July 21st?
Do you anticipate that you would be able to have the language to those amendments for the July 21st hearing? Okay. So in that case, I move that we table this until the addition of the amended language, which is anticipated to be next month's hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second agenda item number six, Mendez temporary use permit.
All those in favor, say aye? Aye? No?
Aye.
No.
Three zero, three one, sorry. You're good. Okay, so the, we're going to continue that item until next month, pending five additional conditions. Thank you. Item number seven. Mine ID 91-35-015, Nash Road Sandman Interim Management Plan.
I'd like to introduce again Bob Delp with Benchmark Resources, who will be doing tonight's presentation.
Can you hear me?
Okay. Bob, we can see your screen.
Are you able to hear me?
I cannot hear you.
I am speaking. Can you hear me now? I am prepared to get started as soon as you can.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, are we ready to get going?
Can the audience hear? Yes, okay.
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 Now, so we're okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. I appreciate the struggles that you're having with technology this evening, and I hope to not contribute to that anymore.
I'm sorry, Bob, hold on just a moment. Why don't you mute yourself here? And I'm going to call through the phone and put the speaker to the phone and see if it works that way, okay?
Okay.
Hello? Okay, I'm putting you live. Okay. Can everyone hear?
Good evening, Mr. Sergeant Allen here. We're on mute also because I'm hearing a lot of echo.
Okay, I'm walking.
Okay, this is Bob Delp. Is that working with that? Yes, and I'm hearing some feedback also. I think if others that have Zoom.
We might need to. I'll get rid of Zoom.
Probably we have to get three different systems that all have to be synchronized and initiated in the right order. People have to have the appropriate training for this.
Five?
At this time, if I may make a public comment, I would like to request that the IT department and the resource management department, prior to the next planning commission, have a dress rehearsal meeting usage of this area in order to troubleshoot and prepare for technical difficulties that may arise. That way, we do not have a disruption of our next public meeting. So I would like to request that you pencil some time to come in here and practice and really troubleshoot all of the technology that you're going to be using at the next meeting.
Thank you. For the members of the public, whether you're in the gallery or on Zoom, uh, we're going to have to take an additional couple of minutes here because of, uh, technical issue. I apologize.
We're not doing it the other way, so we're not broadcasting, so the sound would come through this. Hold on, I'm just trying to troubleshoot on the fly.
Yeah. The sound's on. Does that make a difference?
Can you ask him to speak?
Uh, Bob, can you try speaking?
Yes, I am speaking now, can you hear me? I am speaking now. I am speaking now. Can you hear me, Ariel?
Bob, can you do a test of speaking again?
I am speaking now, can you hear me? I am speaking. I am speaking now, Ariel.
Uh, he's saying he is speaking, yeah. Yeah, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Um, yeah. Okay. Okay.
I, I am still.
I will wing it. Hey, Bob?
Bob, I'm going to do the presentation and, um, and then I will, uh, try to put you on the speaker at the very end, uh, to answer questions.
Outside or on Zoom, we're going to call them back to order and we're working around our technical issues.
Okay. Hi, Ariel Goodspeed, I am going to be going through the Nash Road Quarry Interim Management Plan. So today we're going to go through the background and status, uh, SMARA and County idle mine requirements, the proposed interim management plan, IMP review and conditions of approval and recommendation. So, um, Sandman or Nash Road Quarry, uh, it's located on the west side of town, um, off of Nash Road, um, and, uh, just south of, uh, the sewer treatment plant, um, and, uh, west of West Side Road and east of Riverside Road. There are eight contiguous parcels, approximately 132 acres, um, uh, mm, uh, sorry, north downstream of Nash Road along the San Benito River, west of the city of Hollister. Uh, it's, there's a gated entrance from Nash Road. Uh, there are no fences across the river channel, uh, the riparian and upland habitats, um, substantial disturbance in former processing site area and unauthorized trespass motor vehicle use. So some of the existing, uh, conditions, uh, is bisected by San Benito River Channel. River flows south to north. The site entrance is from Nash Road northeast of Nash, Nash Road Bridge. Um, it's a remnant processing, processing facility from former operations, uh, the east side upland areas and the west side upland areas, as you can see on the map. So some of the quarry background. So the permit for processing the plant was issued to Hollister Sand and Gravel in 1959. No use permit reclamation plan was required. Surface Mining Reclamation Act SMARA was enacted in 1975, which required all surface mines to have a reclamation plan. Hollister Sand and Gravel Reclamation Plan, prepared and approved by the county in 1977. Uh, Sandman Inc. acquired the properties in 1986 and continued operations. Additional background, in 1989, the county ordered Sandman to cease operations and no onsite mining or processing has occurred since. The legal dispute resulted in a Superior Court decision in 2000 and 2001, uh, defining geographic scope and depth of vested right. Uh, re, uh, reinitiation of mining requires, among different things, an amendment to the 1977 reclamation plan. So this is not, uh, to allow, um, mining to occur. This is not what's being proposed to you tonight. Uh, Sandman has submitted, uh, proposed amendments to the 1977 reclamation plan, 2003, 8, 17, 2018, and 2019, uh, none of which, um, were a complete enough application to, uh, proceed. Um, they're working on another, uh, revised, uh, reclamation draft. So seminals are not complete and not sufficient at this time for county review. So this, um, so the current status is that no mining, processing, or other site issues are permitted until such time and amendment to the 1977 reclamation plan may be approved by the county and until Sandman obtains all the other regulatory approvals and permits necessary to reinitiating mining. Um, and the potential, uh, for reinitiation of mining at the site is not the subject of tonight's hearing. So, uh, what we are here to do is to manage the property while i- in the interim of, uh, mining. So, uh, um, under SMARA and our county mining ordinance, Sandman is required to submit mining operation annual reports and maintain financial assurance for the site. This has been done and they're in compliance. Um, and the county conducts these annual inspections and verification of financial assurance. Um, uh, the last inspection was done in October of, uh, 2020 and it was just, uh, submitted to DMR, uh, last week, so they are current. Um, so Nash Road Quarry is a, is an idle, uh, with an intent to resume mining and SMARA and County Surface Mining Ordinance require an interim management plan when a mine is idle. So county has not previously required an IMP for the Nash Road Quarry in, in part due to Sandman's intent to obtain approval of the amendment, uh, to the 1977 reclamation plan. Recognizing need for more formal oversight of ongoing site management activities, in June 2020, uh, the Resource Management Agency directed Sandman to submit a complete application to amend the 1977 reclamation plan or to submit a proposed IMP. So receiving neither, in November, um, Resource Management Agency directed Sandman to submit a proposed IMP. Wanted to make sure that, um, the property was being managed until such time that we were able to get the reclamation plan in place. So Sandman's proposed, uh, interim management plan, uh, Sandman compiled with, uh, RMA's November 2020 directive and submitted a proposed IMP in January 2021. Um, we reviewed, uh, staff reviewed and Sandman made revisions addressing RMA's comments and that resulted in currently recommending the IMP dated April 2nd, 2021. And what does an IMP specifically address? What is it managed? What's being done? So, uh, it's installation and maintenance of the fire access roads, it's stabilization of access road disturbance areas, it's installation and maintenance of perimeter access controls, so fencing, uh, maintenance of vegetation as required for fire protection, uh, monitoring of access, security of the site, and coordination with county sheriff and fire departments. So, uh, this is, uh, a site plan that is submitted as part of, um, your, uh, staff report, uh, tonight and it is the site access roads, um, for managing the property as proposed. So the State Division of Mine Reclamation, uh, also referred to as DMR, reviewed and had no comments on the proposed, uh, IMP. DMR has been notified of the planning commission's hearing as required by SMARA. Uh, the IMP complies with SMARA and county code IMP, uh, content requirements. The IMP will provide for more clearly defined ongoing site management activities. The IMP approval is exempt from the, uh, from CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. Uh, the IMP with recommended conditions of approval will reduce the potential for adverse environmental effects associated with site management activities. So the recommended conditions of approval as included in the resolution, um, include requirements such as, uh, indemnity the county against legal action, uh, document compliance with the IMP and with any applicable federal, state, and local regulatory approvals associated with IMP activities, uh, fund all costs associated with regulatory compliance and inspections, provide annual notices of non-abandonment and compliance with the, uh, county, uh, surface mining ordinance, implement, uh, particulate emission controls during site activities, provide, uh, cultural resource and human remain protection provisions, restrict, restrict site activities between 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM weekdays and Saturdays, uh, and implement trespass control provisions, fence maintenance, signage, security patrols, um, et cetera. So, um, though, uh, so, uh, included on, uh, uh, each of, uh, yours was one additional, uh, condition of approval that was, um, specified after we had produced the packet. Um, it, uh, it particularly addresses, um, security, um, that had been discussed within the staff report, but not, uh, explicitly brought as a condition, um, uh, before you and, um, and, uh, so after conducting the public hearing, considering public input, it's recommended that to plan a condition to adopt the resolution approving the Nash Road Quarry Interim Management Plan and adopted the recommended conditions of approval, um, including the addition of, uh, uh, condition number 14 that is in red. Um, I do have, um, the applicant engineer, Alan Andrade, who, um, can provide additional technical, um, expertise and would also like to, on the applicant's behalf, um, speak to the added condition. If that's acceptable.
Mr. Andrade.
Hello again, Commissioner, Alan Andrade, MH Engineering, uh, applicant's engineer for this project. I'm going to cut straight to the chase in the interest of time. Condition 14 was provided to us today at four o'clock. We really haven't had a chance to even consider it appropriately, but within it, it has a requirement for a private security patrol that is ambiguous in regard to what would constitute compliance with that. We feel it's inappropriate from the perspective of the time that it was provided to us and the lack of clarification with regard to what would constitute compliance. But also, you know, it, uh, trespasses a separate issue that's been ongoing in the river for every property and really doesn't have anything to do with the IMP. The IMP specific has security fences, we're doing everything we can as a property owner. It's spelled out in the IMP in detail in each section. And we know it's a problem, but if your decision would hinge on the requirement for a private security patrol at an unknown interval with an unknown amount of manpower required, you know, does a private security patrol have the ability to do anything about a trespasser? Are they going to be making citizens arrest? Are they going to be armed? Um, really, the, the IMP is set up so that the owner and the sheriff are working on a daily basis as they have been to try to remedy this problem. My proposal would be to have you consider removing the condition 14 outright because it was provided at such a late time and doesn't necessarily apply to long-term interim management. It's strictly related to an ongoing trespass issue that we all know about, that is not solved or there's no benefit to having this condition. The rest of the conditions, the presentation, you know, even with the technical difficulties, I think Ariel did the best job possible and we appreciate your consideration of all elements. I really only have the issue with the private security patrol language within condition 14 that was thrown out the last time.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner, comments?
Uh, Mr. Andrade, I have a question. Could you, uh, speak to us about what are the current, uh, security arrangements at the site? Could you describe that to us?
Current security arrangements consist of, uh, when there's an issue, sheriff and the, the project attorney have been talking. This happens on, uh, probably about four times a year, trying to figure out ways to do things better, modify perimeter controls to whatever extent is possible. The real problem with trespass in this area and, you know, anyone who's grown up in the county or lived here long enough understands that the river itself is treated almost like a, a vehicular recreation park, almost like Hollister Hills without the fee, entry fee. We can't put fences or permanent barriers across the river. If it's a river, we need to maintain that flow that's primary. Um, so trespass control with respect to, hey, put a big fence around the whole thing, that's going to solve it. It's not. If you've noticed in the last three years, a fence has been installed that's far more substantial than what was there along Nash Road. Uh, within days of it being put up, it was cut down. I've seen vehicles go through it on a routine basis. As soon as it's repaired, it's gone. Posting of no trespassing signs, they do it as, as much as possible, but it's a fruitless effort. They disappear as soon as they're put up or within, within the evening. Um, those, those are, those are the, the things I can say on applicant's behalf with my limited amount of ability right now.
Uh, Mr. Andrade, uh, to, to your knowledge, uh, how often does the, uh, owner perform, uh, inspections of the site or, you know, how, how often do they look over the site?
The owner has, uh, there's a, a trailer on it with a residence.
Mm-hmm.
That's, uh, not necessarily going to be a security patrol, but makes the owner aware when there's something that they deem that unsafe is happening on the property, so the owner is aware. Uh, what can an owner do in this situation where it's a large piece of property? Uh, they don't have the ability to really go down and patrol the number of individuals that are trespassing. So notification is made to the sheriff, the owner's attorney and the sheriff talk and, you know, it, it's kind of, it's a struggle. You know, the city of Hollister is dealing with it. Every property owner along the river is worried about it and trying to deal with it. It's not something that should put the IMP in jeopardy because the IMP truly is something that the county has asked for. I think that we've worked hard with RMA staff to provide something that dictates what sort of management operations need to go on to ensure that both fire and sheriff can get out there when they need to, first of all. It, where these, where these encampments are happening, it's not just on this property, it's on city properties in the north as well, it's on other properties, granite rock homes to the south, all along the river. It's, it's an area-wide problem, but, you know, what, what the IMP actually allows to do is allows us to regrade some of those old quarry access roads so that fire and sheriff can actually get out to the spots easily. That, uh, you know, we're providing gates that have the Knox box locks so that they can get in whenever they need to. We've filed a letter with the sheriff two years in a row that We've filed a letter with the sheriff two years in a row that says, hey, we have a trespass problem. Please help us. That is kind of the limit to what the applicant can do.
Thank you. Before we go to public comment, are there any other comments or questions from the commissioners?
I have two procedural questions for county council. The first off is it would be appropriate within our power to make a motion to remove a condition from a resolution? That's my first question. And my second question is whether it is procedurally possible for us within due process to kind of have a segmented or conditional use wherein we have a conditional permission of this resolution pending a further amendment and resolution that reflects this condition 14 once there's been more discussion and input from the owner. So basically allowing us to come back to the security issue.
If you simply want to strike or amend that section, we don't need to come back. You could just do that as part of the amendment.
Okay, but, I mean, I do see a utility in addressing the security. I just do not necessarily want it to impede with the improvements to the fire access roads.
So you could, you could strike that part about hiring private security. You could strike the entire section 14. Okay, any other comments? Commissioner Scaliotti.
I move that we strike number 14 completely.
Well, okay, we're going to go to public comment and see what the public has to say first. Anyone on Zoom? Can we hear you?
Yes, we have a raised hand. Vanderpoel, if you would like to have your comments, I am unmuting you now. So Vanderpoel, you can either press the mute button to speak if you're on Zoom or star six to unmute yourself by phone.
Can you hear me?
There we go. We can hear you. I can see you.
I live, in fact, you can see me sitting out here. I live where the quarry is, right here. And as this has been on, there has been a car speeding by. I know that they try to keep people out. I'm disappointed that the city hasn't done more to keep them out. I can show you right now, since you can see me, last, right before last, we had a kid down here and I actually had to call 911 because we had a fire right behind my house. You can't keep them out. So I agree with some of what you're saying. However, we do need to make sure there's some kind of security down here because it has gotten worse than the last two years. And many of us are concerned about just being cars, the terrain. They're coming down from up by Apricot, and that's not even the quarry's area. It belongs to the city or Grimsley or whoever it belongs to. That's where most of them are coming through and they're coming down the hill. My biggest concern about the mining is that. And then the concern for, you know, our pets and other wildlife. But I know I've talked to the manager and he's, you know, when they built the access roads, they were concerned about that. They left trees. But there is, just to put it on record, there is a major issue with the amount of cars that have come by since they've made that access road. And they speed. And, you know, it just, with summer and the dry heat and campfires, it's worrisome. And I would just like it addressed. You know, I understand the whole issue with security and not being able to. And I don't want to stop them necessarily. I just want to make sure that every precaution possible is taken and that the city is aware that the problem has gotten worse and worse. And the new park, I think, has opened it up even more because now there's another access for them. And that's really all I have to say. And I'm speaking on behalf of several neighbors with that concern of the amount of trafficking, whether it's foot, car, whatever, in the last couple of years, people staying there.
Thank you.
Are there additional public comments on Zoom?
There are no more raised hands via Zoom. We did have a few comment cards for people in the gallery.
Hello, my name is Alfred Valenzuela and me and my sisters, we own Valenzuela Camp, the units there. And my concern is our water. We've been having problems with the water ever since we put those tanks in. There are two 20,000 gallon tanks and they're above, the way they brought them up above, the water's been contaminated now. So what is this going to do to our water next? And my dad's gas line he put down there in 1966, he ran it from Lang Street. How are they going to divert that gas line? There's my concerns. And the salamander, the tiger salamander is an issue also. So, you know, I need some answers on that because it's a concern. The animal life and all this and that. I mean, I grew up in that riverbed and there used to be striper. There used to be a lot of fish down there and, you know, we don't see none of that no more because the river doesn't really run no more. And, you know, it's a concern what's going on right now with the mining. And years back, somebody had told me that there was some pipes coming off the riverbed. These pipes, I don't know what they were from, but there was an explosion back then. Somebody had told me something about that. So I don't know how this mining thing works, but I'm just really concerned about our water. Water's a big issue right now and contamination, any more contamination, I don't know how much more we could take about that, you know? We started with fire sprinklers and all this and that they made us put up in our property. And next thing you know, our water got contaminated. It was good drinking water. The state said back in 1991, September of 91, they said never bring the water above ground in. There it is now, it's above ground, so it's my concern.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment in the gallery? Mr. Betancourt, since you're already up.
Yeah. Richard Betancourt. 4140 South Side Road. When I was a young man, I worked at Hollister Sand and gravel, one, two. My dad farmed to the, let me see, it'd be the northeastern part of that property. So when I sat out there, I, Sandman came before us many times. And it ended up costing the county millions of dollars. And here we go again. The other thing is we just opened a walkway from, was that Apricot Lane to, over to the Fourth Street Bridge? Isn't that on part of this property? I don't know. But it seems like it might be or bordering it anyway. But I'm all for helping this gentleman do it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Delida Jones. I own the property directly across from Sandman Quarry. I'm painfully aware of the problems on the river. We deal with it daily. I think that the quarry is actually doing a lot. They put in a fence. I manage a gate for them. But, you know, it is a problem because the kids come and pull the barriers away. And in the last few years, especially since COVID, there's probably 20 people living on the river, which is where the fires are coming from because they take cars down there and they strip them. But I guess I'm a little confused because it sounds like the quarry is not going to reopen and they're just managing it? If somebody can clarify that with me?
I can if the commission would like me to.
Sure, if you could come up and address that particular issue, please. To the microphone, please.
Interim management plan or IMP would be the document that the county can rely on to enforce maintenance while the mine is idle. No mining is happening. Mining could and is, you know, trying to be restarted again, but that would be a part of the reclamation plan, a separate application and a separate hearing. This is something to substantiate the requirements of the State Mining Act for an idle mine while we're working on getting the other stuff worked out.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
So now I do have some concerns. So right on our property, that is directly across from the entrance where the quarry would be, the property I own used to be part of the quarry, which has its own issues. We've had at least 11 people come through our fence in about 12 years because there's a slight curve. The other day, there was a head-on with a cement truck and a just standard SUV type vehicle, or it was a truck. But, but anyway, so that's a big concern. There are kids that walk on that road to school. So if that quarry reopens, I see huge problems. That will affect a lot of residential properties. I have a business there that I have concerns about because of big trucks coming and going, the noise, the dust, that goes on and on. I think the property is actually too close to town to even consider reopening that quarry because you've got apartments right around the corner and there are kids everywhere. So anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there additional speaker cards or people wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, back to the commission.
Okay, Mr. Andrade, I have a question. Just if you could clarify for us, condition nine does include that the owner will be providing evidence of compliance with the California Endangered Species Act? And that in regards to endangered wildlife and wilderness protection? Is that correct?
The project has Sequoia Environmental, qualified a biological firm that's doing the support both for the IMP and that is under consideration tonight, as well as the rec plan that's in the works. But they're on board and they're required to do pre-disturbance evaluation to make sure that we're not, with the regrading of the fire access roads and the weed abatement, that we're not destroying any sensitive habitat. So it's in line with avoidance based on recommendations from Sequoia Environmental.
Okay. My next question is, at this time, do you have any particular idea of the duration of the interim management plan versus a likely timeline of when the owner will be submitting this new reclamation plan?
Interim management plan will be in place when approved by you and then executed upon the conditions of approval whenever the mine is idle. And I believe it has a termination other than maybe a five-year renewal, which should be stated in one of the conditions. That's just so that everyone gets a chance to evaluate if any additional conditions should be warranted. And then the rec plan, you know, you saw the dates that we tried to submit it the last three years, excepting the COVID year. We've applied every year and it's been deemed incomplete. And we're working diligently with staff to try to, you know, speed that process up, get us to the point where they can deem it complete so that it can go through the next stage of the process, which is another timely process, involves the environmental review and environmental impact report, the way that I understand it. So me giving you a guesstimate on time is totally inappropriate.
I understand. Okay, and just one question for RMA. As a part of that plan, is that also going to include a traffic to impact analysis? It will? Okay. That is going to be a kind of an aspect and a condition of the eventual plan. A question that I have for county council is about the timeliness of, well, I do agree that there has not necessarily that condition 14, you know. What I would like to know from county council is our sort of ability and authority to attach or sort of ask for an additional condition for the interim management plan at a later time, once there has been more discussion and feedback with the property owner? Is that something that can be conditionally?
Your options are to delete condition 14, to modify condition 14, or to table the item until further discussion and resolution of item 14.
So in other words, we can't go back six months down the road? If we approve it today, we can't go back down the road and try to add another condition? Once we approve it, it's approved?
Well, I think that, you know, the input from the public suggests that there does need to be a discussion and, you know, that there does need to be an address about, okay, Mr. Andrade.
What question were you asking?
I was more commenting to the rest of the commission in regards to the discussion. But Mr. Andrade had an additional comment to make?
The problem with the language in 14 was specific to private security patrol and ambiguities associated with it. The applicant would consider you rephrasing it to the point where you require a direct communication and documentation of the communication between the owner and the sheriff so that it can be evaluated by the sheriff. And certainly the sheriff, if he sees something that can happen, could request a change along those lines.
What I would like to propose is that we perhaps table and amend this, amending condition 14. And, well, what?
Are you just suggesting we take out the language regarding private security but not table it? Table it would be putting it off to another meeting.
Well, okay. Okay, can we amend and condition 14 then to represent that the owner shall maintain a log of communications with county law enforcement agents? And also, the condition that I would like to see with regards to 14 is that the owner shall have a weekly inspection of the site. Well, okay, the concern.
By whom?
By the owner or agents of the owner. Basically, I think the major concern is chronic crime. That is to say that, you know, we have had members of the public saying that the site has been used for stripping cars, you know, long-term homeless encampment, the potential for drug activity. And so the security issue is to make sure that, you know, that sort of ongoing fire risks and ongoing criminal activity are not taking place.
I think part of the IMP is going to make access roads so that law enforcement and fire has the access to that property. Right now, if they can't get to it, those people are hidden and they'll do whatever they want to do unless the neighbors see it and report it. So I think part of the IMP would actually solve part of the problem. It's my understanding.
Well, okay, I think that the.
Ariel, could you comment on the value of moving forward with the IMP as opposed to doing nothing?
So the value of approving the IMP is to help manage the site and these issues. I think there could be some possible language mitigation to condition 14 that would address some of applicants' concerns that maybe we cross out private. Actually, if CMAP would like to share my screen here, I can, I have the conditioner. Perfect. Can everyone see okay? Oh, maybe too much. My apologies. Oh, maybe too much. My apologies. We could include regular security patrols, so cross out private, in coordination with the county sheriff office for patrol and emergency response access. Or we could delete regular private security controls and, and have it and coordinate security control with the county sheriff's office for patrol and emergency response access.
I would think that would be acceptable to everyone.
Okay, so.
It's my understanding that the signage requirement was requested by the sheriff.
Okay.
We were just going to strike those.
Yep.
The discussion was to strike the words regular private security patrols.
Right, thank you.
And then, so you want to go ahead and make the motion and?
I, I move that we adopt the resolution with the amended language to condition 14, which strikes the phrase private, regular private security patrols, but otherwise incorporates condition 14 as has been modified.
And you wanted to add language regarding keeping a log of communications between the owner applicant and the sheriff's department? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion or does the motion die?
I will second the motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Thank you. I thought you made a motion to approve the resolution.
Yes, we, we do have to have a motion to approve the amended resolution as we have just.
I thought that's what you did.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
Okay.
Yeah, I understood.
To be to amend, to approve the resolution subject to the amended language in item 14.
I heard the language, I move to amend condition 14, not to approve.
Well, I now move to approve the resolution as has been amended.
Is there a second?
All second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, zero, four zero. IMP approved. Thank you all. Okay.
Last item.
Okay, last item, discussion item number eight, preliminary discussion regarding amending the San Fernando County Code to allow retail cannabis businesses.
I'm going to try this. If it doesn't work, I'm just going to wing it. Okay. Oh my God, it's up. Commissioners, thank you so much for your patience through this very long hearing. We will, we will investigate and, and address the, the problems that we've been having, I promise. And let's close that. Thank you. So talking cannabis, as commissioners are likely aware, the topic of cannabis businesses has been raised by the board. They're looking, as we all are, for enhancing economic development. Retail specifically offers both sales tax revenue and cannabis tax revenue. Measure C, actually, even though retail is not currently an approved use, we do have a provision that sets the cannabis tax at a range between 0.5% and 3%. I believe that's gross sales. So the revenue stream is clear and needed. So, so we were directed to come up with a draft retail cannabis ordinance. There are two different types of retail cannabis businesses. Storefront, brick and mortar, dispensary, and delivery services. The storefront is, is a, is an easier lift, frankly. The delivery, we will address and we will be coming back, but there are more policy decisions to deal with. We envision, and subject to discussion, of course, and input from, from your commission. The storefront in, for instance, C1, C2, commercial zone districts, we think pose very few hurdles when compared to delivery, which we actually envision as being appropriate in more than just the commercial zone districts. AR, AP potentially, but those involve more, more policy discussion. So again, tonight, really just want to talk about storefront. The, the state Bureau of Cannabis Control, BCC, issued separate licenses for both storefront and delivery. Again, commercial zone districts, retail businesses are already allowed. Fewer traffic, parking, and other compatibility issues with surrounding properties, we think, for storefront. Again, delivery, we will be coming back and addressing that at a few, a future hearing. So the first sort of discussion point, and I'll keep this up and, and we'll, we'll talk about all of these when I'm done here. But we can put storefront businesses in C1, C2 with relatively few changes. These, again, already allow retail businesses as an allowed use. And most of these sites have access already to sewer and water. The manufacturing and industrial sites that we have, very limited. The highest and best use of those sites is really for more intensive industrial type operation. I don't think that we want to use those for, for retail, but that's a point of discussion. And the ag and residential districts, again, we really have potentially policy conflicts. A cannabis dispensary is not a fruit or vegetable stand, even though those might be allowed. There just are more considerations with security and compatibility issues, traffic, et cetera. I did, the, the zone districts, C1, C2, are few and far between in our county. And in fact, when I first got this map, I could not quite figure them out. But, but I just wanted to sort of illustrate where these sites would be along transportation corridors generally. And we can do a more sort of granular look at that when we come back. So the ordinances that need to be changed in order to accommodate retail would be the, the chapter 7.02, which is the ag commissioners' portion, and then our use tables, 19.43, simply allowing the, the use. And then adding conditions that we think may be specific to dealing with impacts around retail uses. And then 2516, we need to remove the prohibition. So again, what, what we're talking about is the, the impacts of, of a dispensary, the, the issues that come up most commonly, security, crime, exposure to our youth, traffic, parking noise. Again, the question for commissioners is, do we limit to C1, C2 zone districts or do we open this up? The fastest way, I think, to, to get something on the ground is to look at the C1, C2 zone districts. That's certainly where I'm coming from, but that's, that's why we're here, to get input from you folks. The next question is, I think, relatively straightforward, and that's what level of review do these retail cannabis stores require? Right now, all the cannabis, other types of cannabis businesses require at least a CUP. C1, C2 allows retail with a CUP. I just put in there that, that nurseries, people have made the equivalence between nurseries and dispensaries. Nurseries are, are subject to administrative approval. I think, I think a CUP is more appropriate, but again, subject to discussion. The other issue has to do with setbacks, and this is a little bit more nuanced and we can flesh it out to the extent that you have the, the bandwidth for it. Right now, the non-retail cannabis businesses have a thousand-foot setback to schools and other sensitive uses, churches and parks. That can be reduced with a variance. It's a question about whether those impacts that generally are associated with, for instance, cultivation, we're talking about odor, not really the, the same impact with the, with the retail dispensary. So we could certainly talk about whether that's appropriate. A hundred feet from the premises, that's generally the store to the property line. Depending on how big the site is, that also might be a little bit more onerous than, than what would be required in a C1, C2 zone district. 300 feet from the residential zone district and adjacent, or 100 feet if the parcel is less than 10 acres. I haven't done an exhaustive inventory, but I assume most of these are less than 10 acres. So, so that would be 100 feet. Again, measured from the, the, not, I have to look and check. I don't believe that's property line to property line. My recollection, I actually have a, a little sort of stick drawing, is from the building to the property line adjacent to a residential zone district. That's pretty standard, but we can talk about whether that's appropriate. So the question would be, do we, do we treat retail stores the same way we treat, we treat a farm or a manufacturing facility? The, the next item of discussion is about signage. Right now, C1, C2, you, there's a range depending on the, the frontage and it's ranges from 50 square feet minimum to 300 square feet, which is a very large sign if you have a very large frontage. In Santa Cruz, there's a restriction on the use of cannabis imagery. I don't think that that is applied in the city of Hollister. It's a, it's something that is, is designed to protect youth from exposure and the assumption being that folks know where the dispensaries are without a giant cannabis leaf. But again, it's a subject for discussion. It's not required and there's been some pushback in Santa Cruz having to do with constitutional issues regulating content. They haven't been challenged, so I, I don't see that as an issue, but it's something to consider whether we want to restrict both the size and the content of any signs. Advertising is already regulated by the BCC on the state level. They also have regulations concerning security. So I've said this before, but cannabis is probably the most highly regulated industry there is, given all the different layers, maybe a nuclear power plant, but just as a, as for what it is. The, the layers of, of regulation are pretty, pretty intense. And then the last issue I thought we'd talk about a little bit is, are, how are we limiting these? We could either say, if we want, to say X number of permits are allowed throughout the county. The other way to do it, the way Santa Cruz did it, was to establish a setback. I think 800 feet between stores. We might want to also consider whether we have setbacks to, such as they are in the cities, that may pose competition. It's just a question. Again, we have, I think right now, we have a cap on the cultivation sites. We haven't come close to that, 50. So is it, you know, bring it on, let's see who comes? Or do we want to restrict how many can be in, in one square mile, for instance? I have ideas about these things, but I, I really want to hear from, from you folks and, and, you know, see if you've been thinking about this as much as I have, probably not. And then just a reminder, the idea is that we come back at the next hearing with actual draft language that you can vote up, down, change, whatever, but I want to get everybody's input tonight. And then August 10th, this is, we want to move quickly on this. The idea is to take your recommendations directly to the board and have them vote on this. And then hopefully 18th, we come back and we can talk about delivery. So that's kind of generally, I can go back and look at the topics or you can tell me what else you're thinking about.
Before we go to the commission, I'd like to hear what, if we have anybody left on Zoom.
Oh, excellent.
If there are any comments.
There is no public comment via Zoom and I do not see any public comment via chambers.
Okay, that took care of public comment. Public comment is closed. We'll open it up to the commissioners. Commissioner Scagliotti, any comments, suggestions?
One question. Way back at the beginning, when you started, you said something about the ag commissioner. What's the ag commissioner have to do with the sales of, the, the selling of this?
The current code requires all cannabis businesses to go through the ag commission for a sort of.
Growing and selling.
Right now, that's just, that's cultivation, manufacture. We could talk about distribution another time, but this, unless we completely change that, which is just a heavier lift, but right now, all, all cannabis businesses, please.
One other question, is this going to help remove that on and off timing where it's open all the time or what it's going to be?
The application process?
Yes, is that part of this too or this, am I talking about something I shouldn't talk about?
It can be. I didn't, I didn't put it in because it is broader. It, it covers more than just retail. I do, I do want to see that changed as well.
So how do we go about starting that process, that later?
We suggest an ordinance change because it is.
It doesn't make sense. If people want to do business, you can't be opening and closing something for business. It doesn't make sense. I don't care if it's cannabis, lettuce.
We'll, we'll work with the board to, to make the other changes to the ordinance. But right now, we're just going to worry about getting retail approved.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're right, and, and we've been thinking, you know, talked to county council and behind the scenes, we talk about this a lot. It's just, what's the quickest way? If we take it all on, we're going to be talking about this for a long time because people do have real concerns. And, and retail was cut out for a reason. I wasn't around, I don't know what the concerns were, but it's, there's still a stigma. So it is kind of baby steps for us, but I agree with you. I, I don't want the application period to, to come and go. I, I agree with that.
Commissioner Peck?
I have a first question and then a comment, I suppose. My question is, in looking towards the model language, you've been reviewing the language that has been adopted by the county of Santa Cruz, also possibly the county of Monterey, the county of Santa Clara. And have you looked at the, the language that is in usage by the, by Humboldt County? As they have apparently a very successful and thriving industry. And what can you tell us about the differences between our neighboring counties as far as these top, discussion topics? You already went into the advertising, that's how Santa Cruz differs. What are some other?
The advertising is actually covered by the state. It's signage and everybody is slightly different, frankly. I'm obviously most familiar with the Santa Cruz ordinances, but there's also a different sort of mosaic of zoning categories. It's hard to compare to Monterey, for instance, which has, you know, more sort of commercial areas. It's a little bit apples and oranges, but I mean, I can, I can give you really, again, most of my, my experience in Santa Cruz and, and less so. I haven't done exhaustive comparison other than, than tax rates to make sure that we weren't, you know, way overshooting on, on taxes because that really has been, I mean, even the state has had to lower their taxes because when you make it too expensive at the dispensaries, you, you, you know, you're, you're feeding the black market, which is the opposite of, of where we want to go. So other than. So, other than the tax study, I haven't looked at every jurisdiction, and I took a peek at Hollister to see, and really was, I don't think, well, we have one dispensary in the city that is sort of on the bubble right now, as far as I know. So, anyway, it's, it really is up to us where we think that these belong. I can, I can give you more of a comparison, but it's hard to find a county that is laid out the way that we do, that has such, you know, limited areas to look at for, for commercial anyway. So, but if you have specific issues that you want more education about or comparison, I can, you know, I can look at it. Tell me, tell me what you want, or what your concerns are, and I can try to fill it in.
Okay, good to know. Yeah, I, I think, I think the comment is more just towards the cannabis industry in general than it is towards specifically retail, and therefore, it's not necessarily relevant towards this sort that's. But right now, my understanding is that we have roughly eight C1 and C2 sites in the county. Is that correct, or is that the correct number of C1 and C2 areas?
Specific parcels, I, I'm, no, I'm.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Here we go.
So.
That's the orange one way out by 25, right?
Yeah, well, so, let me see if I can use this.
One.
No. Right, so, can you, no, you can't see that.
We have one that's out near.
Twenty-five by 25, is that where that was?
So, 25 is, right, it's.
That's 156.
Yeah, that's out here by Casa del Fruto.
From the north plus to southeast, right?
I couldn't read it, that's why I asked.
I'm trying to zoom.
The big orange thing?
See, shift plus?
That's the old paintball place, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, look, oh, look, I did it. Okay, so.
Well, that, yeah, that's the old paintball place, you're right. That wouldn't work. That's ridiculous.
Do you want me to move up or down, or more?
By Nash and Union Road, an area by Highway 101.
But we're also, again, not picking a specific site tonight. We're just, we're just trying to figure out whether C1 or C2 are appropriate as opposed to using our very limited industrial area.
Right.
To make a storefront.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, okay, where do you make a storefront?
In my opinion, it would be that C1 and C2 are far more appropriate than an industrial zone.
Industrial zoning is so valuable and so rare, and we really, we'd be missing out on some significant opportunities if we took it up.
You don't want to burn them up for retail.
That's, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, people, you know, it's, it's not out of the realm of possibility that folks could come in and propose rezoning. It's certainly a heavier lift, but that's certainly a possibility, you know, in, for a lot of reasons, not just cannabis, but whether we, you know, go back to talking about the nodes, or we're talking about corridors, transportation corridors, or even, you know, close to other small hubs, the opportunities are there that may not, you know, exist already, but.
Could I trouble you to go back to the list of the particular items you wanted us to share our thoughts on, please?
Yes, no, yes, you can.
My memory is not the best.
I know, I know, I was trying to organize this in a way that would keep it fresh, so.
Commissioner Pack, do you have additional questions or concerns?
Okay, so, you said generally advertising and signage is covered by the state, and I imagine that a lot of it is comparable to the existing regulations on cigarettes, so like cartoon mascots are not allowed.
Joe Campbell, kind of?
Yeah.
Yes, it is, yeah. No images likely to appeal to minors. If you advertise in a newspaper, it has to be a certain percentage of adult readership, 76 and change, so, but it doesn't specifically address signage. They are two different things, and the state, for I'm sure a variety of reasons, has stayed out of signs. So, sorry, keep going.
You have additional suggestions? Commissioner Pack? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Uh, yeah, only recommend, or, kind of, if you can, sorry, if you can go back to the map real quick.
Sure.
Uh, so, the ones that are C1 and C2 are the ones in the city, correct, or kind of in the city of Hollister?
The surrounding, the, right, so, how did I do that before? There. Yeah, so, certainly around, so, we're here, so, yeah, I don't have the city boundaries turned on, so.
So, the dark, the dark red.
And 101, and, so the, yeah, the dark is C2, correct.
Got it, yeah, so my only recommendation would be, like I said, I don't know how the traffic impacts or parking requirements. I would say to incentivize these businesses is, and kind of make them more accessible to consumers, kind of easing back on traffic impact fees, parking requirements, because, you know, those can be, can limit a business, because, you know.
Money.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, we would like to have these businesses kind of, you know, promote success, where opposed to somebody having to drive, you know, 10 miles to get their, to go to storefront. So, that's kind of my suggestion, I don't know.
To incentivize in various ways, maybe with impact fees, or, okay.
I do have an additional question this time.
Commissioner Pack?
So, one of the things to discuss in terms of drafting this ordinance is, you know, you mentioned keeping the taxes at a rate that's kind of comparable to our neighbors that, you know, encourages it. So, one of the items to consider in drafting this resolution is whether the taxes will be directed towards the general fund, or whether they will be directed just to the behavioral health and, you know, public health fund. So, that's, and that is one item that we will have to consider as we develop this, is that not, is that, yes?
Do you mean law enforcement?
Or law enforcement, yes.
You also, you did mean public health, okay.
Or roads.
Well, that's the question, is whether it's to just go to the general fund and just the discretion of, you know, the county in general, or whether we want to be looking at a sort of a, a tax the cost wherein it's going towards law enforcement, public health and behavioral health.
I think when we have the broader discussion of updating the ordinance, that'll come into play, and then we'll have to deal with the supervisors, because limiting their ability to spend money might not be appreciated.
Yeah.
But we can certainly propose that the funds not go to the general fund, and all they can do is amend that language.
Yeah, that's a pretty, that's a pretty challenging conversation to have, I could tell you from experience, to sort of earmark specifically, but there are other ways to address the impacts that you're thinking about.
I have a question. Difference between C1 and C2, what's the difference between C1 and C2 zone, commercial zone? What's the difference between a C1 and a C2?
C1 is thoroughfare, it's actually, more directed toward auto-related, so, yeah, gas stations and repair shops and things, it's more sort of automotive related.
And C2?
And C2 is the.
Is this the word neighborhood?
Neighborhood, yeah.
The expectation is you can go buy a quart of milk and a newspaper.
Run down the street.
Drip mall type stuff.
Yeah.
That you might not need your car.
And that would be where the CUP comes in handy, because then we would have the ability to say, well, not that particular location, because it's not appropriate.
Because I was looking at the orange ones, they're all out in the county, out in the middle of nowhere, so it wouldn't make no sense to put a storefront out on San Felipe Road north of 156. That's why I'm looking at the map, thinking, why would someone, you want to be more downtown so we can make money with it? That is my opinion.
In the county, but close to Hollister.
Downtown, we don't make any money, but I understand your point.
This is a little piece of county right there in the middle of Hollister, I'm looking at it.
I know, I know, you know, it's, it's controversial, but I will say that there have been folks interested in the 101 corridor.
That's fine.
Okay, just throwing that out.
Pulling revenue off of, from the other counties.
I don't care, bring it on.
Easy off, easy off, yes. So, that's certainly a consideration.
Okay, if I could trouble you to go back to the list and then.
I can.
I'll just, I'll say that I don't think there should be a limit. I think we should let the market set the limit.
Really?
Like you said, with the cultivation, we have a limit of 50, and we're currently at zero, so there's no point setting an artificial limit when we aren't even coming close.
I hear you. What about distance from the competition with our city neighbors? No?
No, no distance.
No, bring it, okay.
Yeah.
And you make sure we're half a percent cheaper on the tax, so they'll come our way.
Yeah, I mean, the comment that I was going to make is that when you look at the industry, we have an advantage and a disadvantage over Humboldt, which is currently the nexus, the most concentrated area of cultivation activity in the state. The advantage that we have is logistical and distributional. We're much closer, you know, for a cultivator or grower, we're much closer to the markets of the Bay Area and the Los Angeles and the Silicon Valley than Humboldt County is. The disadvantage is water. Cannabis is a water-intensive crop, as it is currently cultivated, is my understanding. And, so, you know, that's, that's going to be one issue, is that if we want to encourage, you know, if we want to encourage cultivation, if we want to encourage it developing the agricultural aspect of this, we will have to look at the water, but on the other hand, we can be a very attractive community for this industry.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Signage, 300 square feet seems a little big. I don't care how big your storefront is, it seems rather excessive, and I also think that some images we probably wouldn't want on there, so I think that we do need to have language that would limit the size, what that is, I don't know.
50 square feet is huge.
Yeah.
It is, it's relative to.
I would say no bigger than 50 square feet.
It can be smaller, I'm just, that's what we have now for C1, C2.
My opinion, guys, I don't know what you guys are thinking.
Signage, commercial signage, we can have it much smaller.
And then they can come to us and ask us for something bigger.
So, four by, you're saying a four by eight, 24 square feet?
I was saying no more than 50 square feet.
No more than 50, okay.
Well, that gives you 50 square feet, that's how many, that's two sheets plywood.
Yeah, okay.
That's a pretty good size.
That's a big sign.
Is that acceptable, is that a consensus?
Is that okay?
Six by eight, yeah, I mean, or six by eight or four by four.
So, 50, so 50 square feet or less.
Okay.
And then.
Is that too small? You're the guru.
I, no.
What would you say, I mean?
It really does depend, it.
It depends on the building, too, I mean.
It depends on the building, if you're on a corner, if you're, I mean, there's that fine line between, you know.
Yeah, because you get one two-sides time.
Wanting to advertise, you know, weed here, and, oh, I'm looking, well, I'm just saying, and, you know, where's that shop I'm looking for?
100 square feet?
I mean, folks know how to find these shops. It's, it's not like they're going to come screeching to a halt because they saw a giant green cross.
We can talk about it.
So, 50 square feet is fairly standard. Again, it's sort of relative to the size of the building.
And that's not a billboard size necessarily, but that's a six by eight, which is like a really large, you know, full, you know, fill-your-store-window-sized sign.
Yeah, so that should be plenty.
Yeah, I don't think they're going to be having a 20,000-square-foot retail store. I mean, I don't think they could afford the rent. I would want to spend that much money, so I think the 50 should be more than sufficient for most.
They don't need to advertise.
That, in my experience, folks, you know, there are websites that steer you to who's got the deals and who's the best, this or that, so folks tend to know. It's likely not the case that you're going to have folks heading to the Pinnacles that go, oh, honey, you know.
I need that little red paper.
Not that it won't happen, but that's not been my experience. Santa Cruz actually started much smaller and then, and then kind of ramped up a little bit with the signage, just because people were missing it entirely, and apparently don't have, you know, Google Maps or whatever. So, I will, I'll put that in the draft ordinance.
Is there?
Say 50.
50, and is there a consensus for limiting the use of imagery, certain images? I don't know what that language would look like, but do you all feel that it's appropriate to do that?
I think that the language we should be looking towards is in conformity with existing nicotine and drug reg, you know, relating to child imagery and, you know, cartoon mascots, so comparable to what, the rules that are used for the cigarette industry in regards to, you know, not advertising to children.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Or whatever other language that other jurisdictions use that would accomplish that goal.
Images of cannabis leaves, products, anything that screams out.
Just some big old blunt, you know, some guy's.
Like that.
We're making progress. Okay, setbacks.
The green cross is fine.
What are your thoughts on setbacks?
I, you know, the school, my trouble with setbacks is the way it's written now is for schools, it's property line to property line, even if you have topography, you know, you're up on a hill, and we've got a site like this now, I think we can, it's a cultivation site. It's, that's, that's a big setback, but, you know, it also depends on the proximity. I haven't looked at all of our C1, C2 zoning to see how many of these sites could be coming up against that.
None of the ones that you showed on that map.
No.
I know it sounds pretty good.
Yeah.
None of the ones you showed on that map, going near a school.
No, but if it seems overly large, where it would completely limit to just one or two spots, maybe we should reduce it so that it provides more possibilities, is that what you're saying?
I think it's possible, and I can come back with, you know, to support something smaller. 600 feet is actually what the state used to require for cannabis, and then they actually did not, originally, you couldn't get a variance to the 600 square feet. Now, on the state level, they took that out, so you could get a variance for something smaller. That's another option. We could say, you know, 600 feet and allow for a variance in cases where, again, the school's up here, the shop's down here, kids aren't walking by the shop, something along those lines. It feels like, in Santa Cruz, it's called an exception, it's not actually a variance. I don't want to change everything quite that much, but it allows some discretion to say, you know, the issue with kids or other, you know, churches or whatever, if they're not going to, you know, be driving by you or see you on the way to their school, then it sort of doesn't make sense. So, we can, we can kind of tease out some language that maybe sets 600 feet and maybe some process for even reducing that further if, if the situation warrants, right?
We don't want to go where we were with the original ordinance, where we made it so unappetizing that we ended up with zero, so, Commissioner Scagliotti?
Yeah, the city of Hollister has one right next to all of their administration buildings off of San Felipe Road. It's zero feet, right where the food bank is at.
Oh.
The old Gavilan Welding is one of the biggest grows in Hollister.
Wow.
And they're right next to the county buildings, and that's 50 feet.
Wow, you know, county workers.
I'm just saying, we don't have to go that far back.
Right.
And that's county building there, too, that's county buildings there, too.
Yes, so, I mean, it's, you know, I'm, I'm not sure where the churches came in, you know, I guess it's a, you know, religious thing. The schools, I understand, I think we all understand, this is about exposure to kids and, you know, making sure it's not sort of in their face. I will say, though, again, that the state has requirements that restrict, that you cannot see, display cannabis, it cannot be visible from the exterior of the building, the limitations on signage, you know, are high school or junior high kids going to know what the green cross is, you know, probably, but, you know, it's not sort of in your face the way, you know, a cultivation site or manufacturing site, there's going to be odor, they're just, even with the odor control. So, so we don't have that issue, generally speaking, at least that I've come across with retail shops. Doesn't smell like pot when you're walking by. Anyway, so, I can see some flexibility to, to that.
Yeah, the consensus for that as well, to reduce that, so it's a little more business-friendly?
I think so, yeah.
Any comments on the other numbers? 100 feet from premise to property line, or 300 feet into residential? Those are sufficient?
I think that's where you should have the 1,000 feet, is it the residential? Keep it away from residential.
I think she.
I think she put those in there because those are kind of existing on the books.
Yes.
With consideration of how retail's configured.
Right.
Very different setback.
100 feet on both sides from a commercial building? Let me just, I, I have a, I don't know if this is helpful, so, um, so cannabis shop, right? 100 feet to property line, I didn't have any sort of scale here. So you're, you're, you know, 200 feet in from the property, that's, that's a big setback, right? We know, our, our building setbacks are in the neighborhood of 10, 15, 20 feet. So 100 feet on both sides is a lot. So again, this was, this was envisioned primarily for cultivation, big giant farm, and, and, you know, acreage. These C1, C2 sites, and I'll, I'll pull up some, some parcel sizes and stuff if, if that would help, but I think, I think 100 feet is a lot to the property line.
I was talking about the school.
25?
Yeah, let's, let's have.
What's the standard setback on the industrial, when you go from sidewalk to the front of a building? What's the standard setback on that?
Industrial, 20, you guys would know this better than I would, 20 feet? I know, everybody's looking at the ceiling.
Our, our industrial's just not in the city, it's, it's all the country.
Oh, I didn't, I missed the city part. Just, but a general commercial or industrial setback, like from.
It's like 20, I believe it's 20 feet front setback, and I put this at eight on the side, and.
Depends on what you're next to, right? Or maybe not here, sorry, Santa Cruz, so.
Is there going to be a residence within 20 feet of a commercial building?
Well, and so, so I put up the, the 300 foot, which you can shrink on smaller parcels, to, to the residential, adjacent residential site. There might be, I, we, we probably have some non-conforming residences, because that does apply to non-conforming as well. So if a residence has been on a, you know, C1, C2, or, or something, and it's, it happens to be close, that happens. But again, you know, if, if we measure from where the building is, so here, from the building, we're not talking property line to property line, which would be weird, because they would normally touch, but anyway, that, from the shop itself to either the property line or the actual residence. I think, I, I think 300 feet from building to building makes sense, maybe 100 feet to the edge of the property line.
It's good speed.
Hi, so, um, Chief Bedola, I wanted to let you know that if you would like, he could take you on tours of five facilities within the city of Hollister, and being able to tour a facility would kind of help bring a better light and understanding to how this operates. And so we could work on scheduling a site visit.
Sure, that sounds fun, we've never done that before.
There's five in Hollister?
Not retail, just.
Not retail, but five facilities.
Cultivation, manufacturing.
And it just, it would help you better see live.
Uh, well, that would have to be either done serially.
Right.
Or as a special meeting, and the public would have to be, have the right to attend and so on. So, uh, it would be two by two.
We, we can, we can definitely schedule that.
Yeah.
I would be interested.
I'd be interested.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
And then with the, with the setbacks, we have to figure out some, some ranges or numbers, but significantly lower than those numbers? Seems to be the consensus of everybody.
I think so.
Wanting to go 50 feet from premise to property line.
Okay.
So reduce it from 100 to 50, or 20?
Go small, I don't care.
20?
20, 20 it is.
I want to make this work, I want money.
Well, yeah. Don't want to make an ordinance and then have nobody show up.
Might as well go for it, you know.
We got to grow it here, too, to sell it here, I mean, if you guys are growing it here.
We're getting there.
Oh, that's why I'm good, that's why I keep harping at what I'm harping on.
I know, I know, I know. Well, we're getting there. Okay, so 20 to the property line, um, zone district, does it make, or zoned, residentially zoned parcels, really what that should say. The least restrictive right now for other cannabis is 100 feet, again, from the dispensary shop to the property line. We could make that from the shop to the actual structure, the residential structure, and make that 100 feet?
Yeah, I think, I think with.
You don't want to get too close to someone's house, that's not cool.
Right, and there are impacts, you do, if it's popular, there are going to be people in and out, and we can talk, you know, hours of operation are pretty standard, and, and the, and the state actually has some restrictions there. It would be kind of normal business hours.
Well, that's where the CUP comes in handy, because then we can do all kinds of things.
Exactly, okay.
And that would be the next CUP, in my opinion, is the most appropriate, because it comes to us, and we can do a lot of conditions, as opposed to make, I'm all for efficiency, but for this particular item, I think a little more control would be appropriate, as opposed to administrative approval, sorry.
Does not hurt my feelings at all.
So I don't know what, your consensus of the commission? You think it should be an administrative approval, or come to the commission?
Commission.
Come to the commission, I.
Okay, very good.
That's what we're here for.
No, please.
And.
How about it, we'll, we'll make our recommendations, and you can.
I'll shoot you down, we'll take it.
And, and C1 and C2, as opposed to using our other assets for retail?
Oh, just C1 and C2, that's it, don't get us stuck in the middle.
Don't use industrial or.
Or whatever it is, that's not what we do out there, we don't sell dope, cannabis.
Okay.
There we go, I think.
I think we did it.
We did it.
We throw it.
I will see you next month.
Yes.
With draft language, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you to the members of the public that are on Zoom and in the gallery. Do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Move to adjourn.
I second.
Oh, what, hold that, hold that thought.
Public comment.
Uh, no, Commissioner comments. For the next, this has been a brutal meeting. For the next meeting, if it's possible, for those of you that attended that virtual conference, if you could just tell us a little bit about your experience. I did not participate, because virtual things are killing me, but if you could comment on your experience with the virtual conference that you had last month. And Commissioner Scagliotti, do you have other comments before we adjourn?
Yes, just one comment. May I please have my packet earlier?
Earlier than?
Thursday's when we're supposed to have them.
You're right, and we will always shoot for Thursday. There were some changes with that many items and some controversy, some things came late to us. We will definitely shoot for Thursday, and if we can't make it, we will let you know. And, and I, I know that was a lot, and it's a lot to, to read, but there's also, yeah, just, you know, people, the, the public, the, the folks that have gotten it or seen it online or know about it will, will call us, and so. All of that being said, yes, we will definitely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Um, I just kind of wanted to, to add something on the next agenda, or a discussion, or just kind of look more into it. So, uh, just kind of some statistics I was looking up. So according to HUD, 25% of all home mortgages were not for owner occupancy. So they were like investment properties. So I, I was wondering if, I know the county assessor has a lot of the property records. If we, as San Benito County, can, can access a way of finding out how many properties are used for investment properties? And then one way we can track that is maybe seeing how many PO boxes are from out of state, out of the country? Because I would, I think that's good data for us to have, to see how many of the properties have foreign, have invest, they're not actual owner occupants, they're investments.
So.
To contextualize, I think, Mr. Rodriguez, one argument that has been made with regards to the affordable housing crisis is that international investment in real estate properties, it is a phenomenon that exists in British Columbia, in San Francisco, and other places, where there are investors that are not even acting as landlords towards properties, but are merely holding the properties, and this is one of the things that is driving the affordable crisis, affordable housing crisis in California, is properties that are being taken by international investors purely as an investment portfolio, without regard either towards residence or towards rental. And so, you know, there is a question of the degree to which San Benito's affordable housing crisis is being exacerbated by this phenomenon.
I, Commissioner, I don't disagree that those are important issues, and I'm happy to point you in the direction of, you know, where you might be able to track down some of that information. It's not necessarily something that's attached to, to projects or what we would be dealing with here. I would encourage you to talk to the supervisors if you think that that's something that they might want to raise and direct staff. I'm not seeing a connection in terms of bringing something and putting it on the agenda, but I definitely want to make sure that you have access to whatever information exists out there. We can certainly help provide that to you, maybe outside of a formal agendized meeting.
So, thank you. In other words, it's not in the purview of the commission, but you could reach out to the assessor as an individual, as a citizen, and ask for that information.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Be back, thank you.
Is that it? And then, yeah, I've had enough. Okay, so there was a motion to adjourn and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 4-0, thank you, all. Yeah.